Testing, I don't know if I can be heard here. We're gonna be starting shortly, so stand by for one minute. All right, we got thirty seconds. Fifteen seconds. Oh, here we go, five, four, three.
Okay, we are live. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for being here. For those of you not been here, welcome, and welcome to staff and others that are here. This is today, Wednesday, July nineteenth, Board of Sedgwick County Commissioner meeting. So thank you also for those that are watching on KPTS and on our YouTube channels. So, Madam Clerk.
Invitation to be led by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications Department. The 2023 election season is underway. Advance in person voting at the election office started Monday, and the advanced by mail ballot started mailing last week for the primary election. To request your advanced by mail ballot, you can do so now through July twenty-fourth. For more information, visit CedricCounty.org/elections. The Seventh Annual Veterans Awareness Expo is coming up on Saturday, August fifth, from ten a.m. to three. There will be over seventy community programs onsite to connect with and serve veterans. The Cedric County Register of Deeds Office is one of those services, and they will be onsite to file original DD two fourteen discharge papers and issued discount cards. And for today's county good news, I'd like to invite Deputy Harris up here to the podium, and I'd also like to invite Deputy Keigri. Sorry about that. So these two gentlemen had a recent save a victim from drowning, and I was given a kind of a recap that I'd like to read to you for you guys to understand what went down. So on July eleventh, Deputy Clinton Harris was on a routine patrol when he noticed a man and woman standing outside of a vehicle stopped on the I two thirty-five ramp from southbound I one thirty-five. As he neared the vehicle, the man, Joshua Hicks, started running down the embarkment towards the K dot West Lake. He quickly noticed Joshua, the deputy quickly noticed Joshua and was running towards an overturned van submerged in the lake. Deputy Harris communicated the location and nature of the accident and ran toward the scene. Four men who had been in the van were on the bank of the lake and told Deputy Harris their coworker was still in the van. Without hesitation, Joshua and Deputy Harris entered the water to find the remaining victim. The van was mostly filled with murky lake water, and the victim was not visible. Deputy Harris broke outside windows on the van so he and Joshua could enter and search for the victim. Eventually, the victim was located and pulled from the van. Deputy Harris and Joshua carried the unconscious person to the banks of the lake, sinking into the muddy bottom with every step. Deputy Kingry arrived and assisted the victim to the bank where Deputy Harris did his best to create a stable platform and began chest compressions. The two deputies performed chest compressions on the victim until he was turned over to fire and EMS personnel. We, along with the Sheriff's Office, are extremely proud of the actions of these three men who acted without concern for their own safety while rescuing an incapacitated crash victim. Their response can be credited to saving this man's life. We felt this was an important enough event that we wanted to bring them in front of you so that you could recognize them for their work. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Well, thank you. Just a day in the life, huh, of you guys. Thank you. You want to say anything? That's congratulations. We got briefed on that in a brief email, but it's really nice to see a face and know who they are that helped do this. That's important, important stuff. So, thank you. Any Commissioners have anything? Yeah, go ahead.
Your finger was cut as you were trying to extract the victim, is that true?
Yeah, so, oh, sorry. I guess there's a microphone here. Yeah, so breaking out three windows, cut up my hands a little bit, got fourteen stitches. Nathan got a couple cuts as well, and so did Josh, but a couple mine were pretty deep, so, but not too deep.
Which finger was it?
Say again?
Which finger is it?
My ring finger. My ring finger. Oh, that's maybe symbolic, I don't know.
That's really good that nobody was hurt. Commissioner Beatty?
Yeah, gentlemen, thank you. On behalf of a community, thank you. You're heroes. And what's interesting about this, and I hear stories, maybe not on this scale and this dramatic of what you've done, but we hear stories all the time of what our sheriff's deputies fire EMS, what they do. And man, we just gotta do a better job of singing your praises to a community so they know that you put your lives on the line. You do, this was just, this was unique, but this was another day of work for you. You signed up to put your life on the line every single day when you clock in, with families that are worried, with the community that is, that needs men and women like you to stand in the gap. So, on behalf of Cedric County, I just, you're heroes, and we honor you today. We thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
There's more.
You'll probably hear a little bit from everyone, so, no, I just want to reiterate everything that's already been said. Thank you so much. There's a reason why we prioritize public safety in the way we do, and the story just exemplifies, it just shows exactly why that's what we do. And so, I can't thank you enough. You guys put your own lives at risk, and that's just, not everybody has that in them to do that. So it takes a special person to be able to do that. When Nicole was reading that, even though I knew the story, I still got chills. So, it's just, it's really impactful, and that person is still alive and gets to live the rest of it and have a family and everything else because of the actions that you guys took. So, from all of us, thank you so incredibly much for your work.
And Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to say, when this story broke, I had people contact me. There was excitement in the community about this story, and they referred to you guys as superheroes, and this was a divine appointment. So I just thought, you know, you guys, hopefully you understand how the public views this. It's incredible story, and we want to say, safe, all the comments have been good this morning, I agree with all them, but I also want to say thank you for what you did. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thanks, Nicole. I appreciate the updates. This is a good part of the, of the exciting part of the beginning of our commission meetings.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
We had some people signed up for the public agenda, but I think they all want to speak to the zoning case. Is that correct? You could, you could address us now, or you could wait till the zoning case. My assumption is the zoning case. All right. So we don't have anybody else from the public that want to address the commission? So, next item, please.
Proclamations, item A, proclamation declaring Americans with Disabilities Act Day.
Commissioners, we have a proclamation that I'll read. Whereas the American Disabilities Act was signed into law July twenty-six, nineteen ninety, by President George W. H. W. Bush, and this year marks the thirty-third anniversary of the landmark legislation. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act has improved the lives of people with disabilities, ensuring equal opportunities, access to county facilities, programs and services, and inclusion for all citizens regardless of disability. And whereas Cedric County, Kansas, most populous county, has incorporated this law into the fabric of the community, ensuring access to services, programs, activities and facilities. Whereas local government entities have proactively collaborated to comply with the ADA as evidenced by the creation and support of the Wichita Cedric County Access Advisory Board, as well as maintaining an ADA Coordinator's Office within the county government structure. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Chairman Peter F. Meitzner, and the Board of Cedric County Commissioners do hereby proclaim July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three as Americans with Disabilities Act Day in Cedric County, and call on all residents to support inclusivity for persons with disabilities in this community and to continue efforts to advise our county leadership on areas of improvement. Today, July thirteen, twenty twenty-two, so Commissioners, I make a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to accept is Brian Powers, who's also the Chair of our Wichita Cedric County Access Advisory Board. Nicole, or somebody want to get the, well, I'll give it to him.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You want to address us?
Yes, thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commissioners. On behalf of Wichita Cedric County Access Advisory Board, thank you for this proclamation memorializing the thirty-third anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. I'm Brian Powers, Chairman of the Access Advisory Board. It has been and continues to be an honor to serve in this capacity. Part of the Board's duties are to help educate the public about the ADA. With this proclamation, you've helped to serve that purpose. I'd also like to thank the members of the Access Advisory Board who volunteer their expertise in service to their community, some of whom are here today, and our Cedric County's ADA Coordinator is also here. One distinguished member was my predecessor, Mr. Dave Calvert, who recently passed away. He was a friend. Mr. Calvert led this board for many years and was truly a champion of persons with disabilities. He advocated for their rights and made this city and county a better place. I remind our friends and neighbors and all of our citizens that disabilities are both seen and unseen, and to therefore treat everyone with dignity and respect. I'm confident that this body, the Access Advisory Board and others acting upon our behalf, are all working to make this a better place. The Americans with Disabilities Act and the county's incorporation of its tenants has created a more inclusive environment for our citizens. Thank you again for this important proclamation.
Okay, thank you, Brian. And Brian, thank you for recognizing the efforts of Dave Calvert.
Good morning, good morning, Commission. Thank you. And I just wanted to say, you know, behalf of the Access Advisory Board, thank you for recognizing the disabled community and the blind community. We need to do more to recognize the blind community and the disabled community in this town. So, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Kylene Blaming. For those of you I haven't met in person, I am the Cedric County ADA Coordinator, and it is my privilege to serve in this capacity to help not only our employees be able to have the accessibility that they need to be able to perform their job duties to the best of their abilities with accommodations, but also to serve the public and to ensure that all of our services and locations are accessible to them. So it is definitely an honor that you have recognized the Americans with Disabilities Act anniversary next week, and we appreciate this very much.
Thank you. Thirty-three years, it just seems like not long ago when it was passed.
Yes.
Shows how time flies. Okay, thank you much. Thanks for all you do.
Yes, we would love to.
Okay.
Photo, photo.
Should we just stand up? Want you to get right up here in the middle, Andrew.
Right here in the middle.
There we go.
Nope. All right, ready guys? Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thanks again, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item B, resolutions appointing four positions on the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, Board of Code and Standards and Appeals.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioner Justin Wagner, County Counselor. The four appointments in this item are to the M A B C D Board of Code Standards and Appeals. It's a nine-member board jointly appointed by the Wichita City Council and the Board of County Commissioners. They provide technical code review and recommendations to both the city and county governing bodies on matters involving the building codes and numerous other related items. There, again, there's a total of nine total appointments, four city, four county, and then one joint appointment. They're all together in this one agenda item. The first resolution is for Taylor Zimbleman. He would be a new County Commissioner, Class B Contractor Appointment, replacing Randy Harder, who has served his full four terms that the code provides. This would be his third term of service, because he's actually, he's already served two terms on this board as a City of Wichita Appointment for the Public at Large Member. So this would essentially be shifting him into a different position on the board. The second member would be Brad Rice. He would be a new jointly-appointed City and County Class A Contractor Appointment, replacing Randall Coonrod, who also has termed out on the board. The third appointment would be for Eric Perkey, who is a reappointment of a Board of County Commissioners' Public at Large Position. This would be his third term. Then the fourth appointment is for Miles Millsbaugh. It would be a reappointment of a Board of County Commissioner, Real Estate Representative Appointment, and this would also be his third term. All four of these folks have been recommended for appointment by Chris Labrum, M A B C D Director. The resolutions are in order, and I recommend that you adopt them.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. Appreciate Chris and the efforts of, this is an incredibly important board, and on all the, all the work that Chris and the staff have done to nominate these four. And anybody have any questions about any of these? And I don't see any, so I'm gonna make a motion that we, that we approve the resolution appointing the four positions to the M A B C D Board of Code Standards.
In a second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you again, Chris and staff. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business, item C, Z O N twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two zero, Zone Change Request in the County from S F twenty, Single Family Residential to G C General Commercial to permit, to permit vehicle storage yard generally located on the west side of North Ridge Road within one quarter mile south of West Forty-Fifth Street North.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Scott. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning. Thank you. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department, here to present this item. In this case, the applicant is requesting, as you heard, to rezone the subject site from S F twenty, Single Family Residential to G C General Commercial. This item is being heard today because valid protests were submitted against the application. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated they would like to continue storing commercial vehicles at the site, which falls under the defined term Vehicle Storage Yard in the Unified Zoning Code. In terms of the property, the site is generally located north and west of K ninety-six and Ridge Road. It is five point two nine acres in size. The entire subject site is currently developed with a single-family house, related outbuildings, yard, et cetera. The property is located within the City of Wichita Urban Growth area. In terms of context, the subject site is located approximately one quarter mile north of K ninety-six Highway. Properties in this area are a mix of commercial, industrial and residential zoning, as well as those uses. Properties directly abutting on the site on all sides are zoned S F twenty, Single Family Residential, as you can see on this map, and are developed with single-family residences and also accessory structures. A twenty-two acre property east across Ridge Road is zoned L C Limited Commercial with a C U P on it and developed with a single-family residence and also a vehicle repair operation. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about the recommended protective overlay and screening that would apply in this case. The protective overlay is detailed in the staff report, but here are some highlights that are a little bit unique. The protective overlay would limit the amount and type of signs allowed at the site. It would require that vehicles be screened and reasonably hidden from the ground-level view from adjacent properties and street right-of-way. It would also restrict the vehicle storage use to ten thousand square feet and would require the vehicles to be stored behind the principal dwelling unit. And again, this is vehicle storage, so the vehicles would need to be operable. This is not a salvage operation. In terms of review, on May twenty-fifth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request by a ten to zero vote, subject to the provisions of the protective overlay as described in the staff report. One member of the public spoke in opposition to this request at that hearing with general concerns about the storage of commercial vehicles and possible negative visual impacts to surrounding residential properties. Multiple protests were received for this case totaling forty-six percent of the protest area. This exceeds the twenty percent threshold set by the state. Therefore, a supermajority vote of four out of five is required in order to approve this request. In terms of commission action, it is recommended the Board of County Commissioners adopt the findings of the M A P C, authorize the Chairman to sign the repaired resolution, which would approve the zone change and the protective overlay. Alternatives include the following, and this would require four out of five votes because of the protest petition. Alternatives include the following: You can deny the application by making alternative findings, override the Planning Commission. This would require a two-thirds majority, or again, four out of five votes. Or as always, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for further consideration with a statement specifying the basis for sending it back. This would require a simple majority vote. And so with that, I'll take you through some of the photos and images of the site. You can see the subject site outlined in red here. Here's the zoning map, and you can see that there, the majority of the zoning is S F twenty, but there are a fair amount of properties that are zoned in other zoning districts. And I would highlight that this is an area where we've seen a number of zoning cases just within the last twelve months. This is the map from the Comprehensive Plan, showing that this area is recommended both for new employment and new residential. This is the protest map. All of the valid protests in the protest area are shown in red. Those outside the protest area are shown in blue, and you can see that the total is approximately forty-six percent, so above the twenty percent threshold. Here's a photo of the site. Here are some of the vehicles that are being stored on the site. It's my understanding that the vehicle storage is taking place prior to the case, the application being filed, so this is an attempt to get in compliance with the zoning code. Another photo of the site, and then photos of the surrounding area. Oh, in the area, there are, as we mentioned, there is commercial and also it looks like some industrial structures across the street. And then this is the Village Travels Building that's down by K ninety-six, which is approximately about a quarter, less than a quarter of a mile away south. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Before we move in, I think, since it is a zoning case, we need to reveal that each Commissioner, I have not had any ex parte communication with anyone on this case that I recall, at least for sure. So I will remain neutral to my decision. Commissioners? Go ahead.
Chairman, I've only had a briefing from staff. That's the only communication I've had. Thank you.
The only thing I've had is briefing from staff.
Same.
Chairman, same with me. Only thing that we've had ex parte is a briefing.
Okay. So is anybody have any questions for Scott at this time? Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. Scott, thanks for the review of this. You're right, this whole area is a hodgepodge of different zoning, and a lot of it is, because some of the homes in this area are older, and this development has taken place. You've had farmers, you've had truck drivers that have stored and done their business on their property, and now they're being caught up into a lot of commercial development and future other residential development. I have a question about this one in particular. The protective overlay with the screenings, is the applicant going to be required to do additional work to? additional work to suffice the screening overlay, the protective overlay? Or is what they have currently going to suffice to satisfy that protective overlay?
Well, there's, there's two parts to that. Whenever you ask a planner a question, you get a complicated answer. So here's the two part is, number one, because they are rezoning to something other than residential, there would be a requirement that there would be screening between this property and the residential properties. Now, the vegetation in some, in some areas may stand in for a physical fence, but they would have to provide that screening. So it's a substantial amount of screening that would be required. In addition, there are additional provisions. That's just what's in the zoning code as a standard. The protective overlay itself also specifies that any vehicles that are stored on the site should be reasonably screened from adjacent, from the view from adjacent properties and also from the right-of-way. So in addition to what's normally required in the zoning code, they have that additional condition that would apply. So there would be additional work required of the applicant.
There's additional work required to be satisfied with this.
Yes, sir.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go into the public comment. Did any of you all that signed up to talk, was that on this item or on another? Yes, sir.
Okay. Chairman, if I may, it might be preferable to let the applicant go first and then let the rest of the public respond.
Yeah. Thank you for the reminder. So we will go to the applicant comments first. The applicant, is anybody here representing the applicant? Okay, good morning. Make sure you state your name and address, and you can address us, and there may be some questions from the commissioners. Back to you.
My name is Angel Delion, and I live with my parents on 4435 North Ridge Road, and I came here to talk for them so it comes a better transition and just more smoother, and they can understand, and you guys can understand them better.
Good morning.
So we acknowledge that there is a screening required, and we've already been doing this. We've already started building a fence, and, and we just came here to kind of fully understand what you guys want us to do because we don't want no problems. It's just a family business. We don't want to make it any bigger. It's just for us to provide for our family, and... Any, anything specific that you guys would like me to talk about?
Okay. I don't see any, any questions, but thank you, and you might want to stay handy in case we need to call you back up.
Sounds good.
Okay? Appreciate it. Okay, now we'll go to the public comment. So people, the public, I think Michael Imbert, did you sign? Okay, sir? All right, well, it's, state your name.
How much time do I have?
You have five minutes, sir.
Five minutes, huh? Guess I can talk for a long time then.
Yeah, let's.
You see that picture right there? Well, I live right opposite, directly opposite. So, you know, the vision is directly in front of me. And before they moved in, the vet used to, you know, the zoo vet used to, director used to live there, and he had a lovely landscaped operation, you know, beautiful. When they moved in, that all changed. And as first, I mean, I thought they were going to be a family moving in, you know, residential area. And that happened at the beginning, but eventually, all kind of stuff used to be happening inside there. Now, these gigantic dump trucks, as tall as this building nearly, you have like four or five gigantic, you know, dump trucks that come in and out of that business, morning, noon, and night. You know, like four of them come out in the morning, go back in, come back out, you know, go back in. So as far as it being a storage place, that doesn't seem to be logical, because, you know, you can't have vehicles coming in and out every five minutes, and you're storing vehicles inside there. So it looks like some kind of operation is going on inside there. And plus, it's no longer beautiful. It's very messy, and, you know, the tree in the front yard is dying, so, you know. And then I also have a 97-year-old, a mother-in-law, who, you know, when these trucks come out, it feels like one of these earthquakes from Oklahoma, you know, when the ground starts to shake. I was watching TV one time, and the ground started to shake. I thought it was Oklahoma, but it was a big truck coming out of the, you know, the front yard and going up the road, you know? So these trucks are humongous, and they, you know, when I look out the door, all I see is trucks, because they're so tall, you know, they're nearly the same height as the building. And, you know, in my opinion, it's a disgusting kind of view, right? You know, it's not, the ambiance is no longer what it used to be in the neighborhood. And, you know, my wife, you know, gets annoyed because she hears these trucks moving to and fro all the time, and you say boom, 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 boom. You think it's an earthquake, you know, or a hurricane, or a tornado, or some kind of thing. And I don't think that a business should be operating inside of a residential area. If you notice that the red that was all around that building, you know, people protesting against it, right? So it's not only one person, it's not only two people, it's the whole area around their side. So, you know, I don't think our operation should be operating in a residential area, especially old people living there, you know, have health problems and all that kind of stuff, and the noise factor, you know, cars racing up and down the road in the middle of the night. That's what used to happen as well, you know? It used to be racing all over around, like, you know, the whole of 96 and around, the whole area is a racetrack. So, you know, it's a very, it's not a peaceful operation, put it that way. And it just puts everybody on edge. You know, you can ask the rest of the guys who are going to be talking here, they're going to say the same thing. So I'll cut it short and sweet, and that's what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Imbert? I don't see any. Okay, thank you for your comment. Next was Jim Nichols. Good morning, Mr. Nichols. State your name and address, and you have five minutes to address us.
My name is Jim Nichols, 4425 North Ridge Road. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners, for your time this morning. I live just south of the property where that pond's at. My wife and I have lived here 41 years, and my good friend, Sedgwick County employee, Mark Reed, the zoo director, lived here for 21 years. And when his wife passed away, it went up for auction, and the new residents bought this property approximately six years ago, and they started with one dump truck, one small truck, and it grew into five, two skid loaders, and the vehicle storage is very deceiving. They're in and out of there all day long. He brings in rock, dirt, sand, piles it up. Sometimes he leaves it there two days, two weeks. Right now, he's got a whole, he's got probably 30 ton of rock piled up, and then he resells it, and this is all in the floodplain. And he parks his truck up against my barns, and when I go out there, I get nothing but diesel fumes. And I sure do miss Mark Reed. If, if, if he's required to put up a fence, it's not going to stop the noise. The noise is tremendous, and I can't, I can't be more specific. I think the vehicle storage was kind of a lame application to put on there, because that's not what it is. They're in and out of there all day long, seven days a week, he'll work holidays, whenever he has a job. He is a good, hard worker, I'll say that, but he's, it's not just, the vehicles just don't stay there, and then they, in the morning, they leave, and they're gone all day long. They're in and out of there all day, sometimes late at night. Sunday morning, there's never a day off. When he has a job, I mean, he goes and does it. And keep in mind, too, this is all in the floodplain, and we've had water all the way up to our house over the 41 years, when we have some big, the little slough and the big slough is right behind us. And the gentleman, the Metropolitan, mentioned that property to the east is commercial. It is, but it's not being used. He passed away, and it's farm ground, and she's 89 years old, and there's no business running out of there right now. Yes, he had, he had a couple trucks, but that's all of the past. It'll probably be, it'll probably get developed in houses just to ease to that property, there's a new housing development going in there. So it's been a great, quiet area. Do you have any questions for me?
Is any questions for, no, I don't see any. Thank you for sharing your comments. Okay. Next up was Tony Liu. Hope I pronounced that correctly. Lauks? Okay, sir. My apologies.
My name's Tony Lauks. I live at 4400 North Ridge Road. I want to reiterate what Jim shared with you. Amongst all the other things, it's the noise, the pollution. I'm on whale water. There is work going on on these vehicles, and I don't care how careful you are, you are going to have spillage. Radiator shops do it all the time. They have accidental spills. You ruin my groundwater, I have no alternative water. And the noise is outrageous. Air braking to stop three houses down is not necessary. And the trash being blown around and thrown like a beer bottle. It's, I'm picking up trash all the time out of the yard. I try to protect the value of my home, and this is not going to help the value of my home at all. Do you have any questions for me?
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lauks?
All right.
I don't see any, Mr. Lauks. Thanks for sharing your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, we had two others, but is Deanna Bichel, is that this item? The next item? And then Wayne Iverson? Next one? Okay. So that's the, the public comment, so we will close the public comment and bring the discussion back to the bench. Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. My question's for Scott. Scott, a couple of questions. This rezoning is for a vehicle storage yard, and from the comments that I just heard, it sounds like there's more than storage going on there for vehicles. Is this the appropriate zoning for this piece of property?
Thank you, sir. Excellent question, and something we've been discussing a little bit during the testimony. It sounds like what's taking place is home occupation. Now, in the county, home occupation is allowed by right. However, there are certain requirements that you need to meet. There are limitations on the amount of vehicles that you can have associated with that, on the property, and other conditions. So in our quick discussion, we know that this came in because it was noted as a violation, and we know that M A B C D staff have been in conversation with the applicant about those. So we are going to double-check with them to make sure that there are no other conditions that need to be addressed. But to date, the vehicle storage is the condition that has been identified that needs to be addressed for them to get in compliance.
What about the vehicle maintenance that we heard that's going on, and the storage of, of different supplies, there, like rock and so forth? That doesn't sound like vehicle storage to me.
No. And whether that fits under the home occupation, I think, is part of the question. So, and unfortunately, we don't have an answer prepared for that one right now. That'd be something we would have to consider.
One final question. Sounds like Legal wants to talk to us a little bit, but... The screening isn't complete right now, but once that, if this is approved, how soon do they have to have the screening in place?
It would be, it's a condition in order for them to be in compliance. So as far as the timing and how soon, JR, I don't know if you have any insights on that? Okay. So it appears that we don't have a specified time in there. It'd just be a sense of what's reasonable. Now, you can always add a condition that would specify what amount of time they have in order to get that in place.
And it looks like the vehicle storage is only allowed on 10,000 square feet. Is that right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So if they are using other portions of this lot, I don't, that looks like a pretty good-sized lot there, they cannot use that for anything that's beyond this zoning, correct?
They cannot store more vehicles than they can fit onto that 10,000 square feet. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all my questions right now. We'll see what Legal has to say with my questions. Thank you.
Kirk Spence, Assistant County Counselor. So some questions have been raised about other items potentially in excess of the vehicle storage yard use. Just generally speaking, without, without supposing what's going on there, there are other potential uses that are associated with properties, outdoor storage, maybe the storage of construction sales, of construction sales items, things of that nature. Those are other uses which may or may not be permitted. What's coming before you is just the vehicle storage yard, so that doesn't give them, if you were to approve today, that doesn't give them carte blanche, you know, approval to do whatever they want on the property in excess. They would still be subject to other potential violations if they are occurring. Those would be reviewed by the M A B C D.
Okay, thank you. And I need to ask the applicant some of the same questions, if you don't mind. So, sir, if you could go back to the podium, I appreciate it.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Victor Delion.
Some of the questions we heard are forming vehicle maintenance.
Okay. Well, you know, for many, for vehicle maintenance, we have a place, we take it, it's a freightliner up on West Street. Usually when you need, you know, big stuff, either we have flat tire, we have to call someone, you know, wherever we get it, get it done.
Okay. To further explain that, so with maintenance, we really don't touch anything that involves liquid, fluid. Like, if it's a tire, we got to fill it up, yes, but we don't do big projects because we realize that could be messy and cause problems and, and cause a mess of, like, any oil. You don't want to see oils on the ground. And then furthermore, with the rock piles and sand piles.
We don't have any sand piles.
We don't, we don't have any piles like that, and if we do get rock, we get it to level out the floor and just make sure there's no puddles and anything.
We don't have that much.
Because if you could see, I have cameras all around my house, and I could see, you could see that I've gravelled the whole front yard, the whole backyard, the whole location of where our trucks are. They're all gravelled, and that's the reason why we get rock, too.
So are you putting rock down on the whole area, or just?
Just specific areas where we keep our trucks.
Because we have a horse, we have a sheep sign, and we let it go out there, so...
So more to like the edge of our last building, we have animals, and the rest of that land is just for them, just for them to be feeding. We don't use any of that stuff. And then with the vehicle storage, all the vehicles that we have are operable, and they work, and we don't, it doesn't make sense when they said that we run seven days a week all day, all night, because we really stop around 3 o'clock, and that's, that's hours of operation. And on Ridge Road, there's constantly traffic. It's right off 96, and there's a sand plant on Hoover, there's three sand plants. On Hoover, there's two, and at the end of Hoover and 53rd, there's also another one. So that's why there's dump trucks all around there in that area, and that's why there's a lot of work going on and a lot of noise, because that's a big hotspot for big trucks, because that's a lot, that's where the central sand is, and that's where the work is at. North Ridge and Air Capital.
And also, I want to say for him, her wife come and get, and attacked me, and I had their video.
Okay, I'm gonna explain that. So after we first got approved, his wife came down to our property and kind of harassed my mom. We have video, video proof, but we weren't going to say anything about that.
Okay. We need, excuse me. Understand the, the language and the teamwork here, but been instructed by Legal. We need to have one person talk at a time. So if one of you want to address, okay.
Good.
So the other two should remain.
All right, sounds good. Okay. I understand.
I think that helps identify for the, for the minutes and name and address, things like that.
Correct. Correct.
Is there any other? Did you want to finish something?
Okay. And also we've realized, we, no, we understand the screening, like I said before, that we have to, there can't be no view from the public. And ten thou, ten thousand feet square is amount for our trucks or for the storage unit. And we just, like I said, we came here to understand everything so we can do everything right and have no problems with anyone. So at the end of the day, that's what we want, no problems.
All right.
And that concludes to everything I got to say.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question for the applicant as well. So as this has been described, are all these vehicles for like a personal business or is this something you are leasing that your property to, for, for other people to store their trucks on there? What's the nature of these trucks being on your property?
So we have, we have four dump trucks and they're ours and we use them to run our, our little company. But all our other vehicles are mostly personal vehicles and, and yeah, just to store them.
Okay. All right. And in terms of the complaint about the, the noise like the jake brakes and the, and running early morning, that type of thing, can you describe what might generate noise in terms of what you do on a day-to-day basis there?
Okay. Yeah. So when we turn on our trucks, yes, they're diesel engines, they're pretty loud. It's not like we're revving them, it's just they have to be turned on to, for them to be filled up with air before we're able to drive them. And if we could turn them on and just leave so they don't, we're causing no noise, yes we could, but it's not possible.
But let me ask you, what you?
He has to talk.
Yes.
Okay. And then with jake braking, that's the very loud noisy noise when you brake. Only two of our trucks are able to do that. So when they say that, that we do that all the time, that's incorrect because we don't have big enough trucks to be able to be doing that all the time.
And so the other thing is trucks coming and going, you know, it sounds to me like this is a, you know, picking up material, dropping off material. I'm not sure that's what's happening here. It sounds to me like you're, you're taking the vehicles out in the morning, you can make them back at lunchtime, grab lunch, do a break, whatever, then go back out and come back in the evening when you're done at the end of the day. So it's really basically your, the vehicles are stored there when you're not actually doing whatever's that, whatever's these trucks are supposed to do in their business role, but when they're coming home, this is where they go. That's what you're telling.
Yes, correct. That's our yard. And we're, and we do not come back and forth. Our trucks are basically gone for the whole day and they come back, maybe, maybe once, one truck will come back, but normally we have all the trucks running until three and they come back and then we're done with our operation.
Thank you, Chairman. That's all my questions.
Okay. And Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. Scott, I have a question. What, what are the limitations in the current zoning, the single-family residential district? What is the current limitations on vehicles and storage of vehicles and what is acceptable at this point in time?
So it falls under the definition of vehicle storage and it has to do also with the amount of time that the vehicles are stored there. And I don't have that definition handy right off the top of my head. But, okay, seventy-two hours worth of storage.
I guess to specify, I'm trying to find out where the, in violation, that a way we can define, what's the violation they're in, what, it's prompting a request?
It's the size and type of vehicle.
The size of truck.
All right. So we've got two things that are at play here. Number one, you've got a residence. Number two, you've got a home occupation business. And so the dynamic between what's allowed under the home occupation business anyway with this property versus what's causing it to be in violation. And our assumption is that it's, it's been found to be in violation because, not because of the fact that they're the work trucks, but because of the amount of store, the amount of time and duration that trucks are being stored there.
Okay. Okay. So the protective overlay for the vehicle storage is limited to ten thousand square feet, but if there's a zone change to general commercial, that's for the entire five acres. So are we not able to, there's no limitations for what's happening on the other?
No. Excellent point to bring up. So as part of the protective overlay, it actually limits the uses to those allowed in S F twenty, single-family residential. And I'm going to look, flip through here for the protective overlay, except for, it says here in, under the first, first number under the protective overlay, the subject property shall be limited to those uses permitted in S F twenty, single-family residential and vehicle storage yard as permitted in G C. So the only thing effectively G C that would be allowed on this property with protective overlay would be vehicle storage. Otherwise, it would be restricted back. Everything else would remain the same at S F twenty. So in that case, that also triggers then the home occupation regulations that apply under S F twenty. So this property would still have to be in compliance with those. And there are limitations under home occupation. It does allow an individual to operate a business out of their residential property, but there are limitations on the amount of storage that they can do there. Contractor storage is allowed, but there's limitations on the amount of storage. There's vehicle repair is also allowed there. So any of the properties in this area that are zoned S F twenty can do this today, but there are limitations of what type of vehicle repair can take place there. And those are identified in the zoning code. I just, I don't have them written in.
So in your, in your opinion, are changing this zoning, does it add an additional layer of constraints or restrictions or are we better defining what could be done here versus what's currently there? I mean.
In my opinion, it does, it does both. It relaxes the restrictions so that they can do the vehicle storage, but it adds additional conditions that they would have to comply with in order to, to, to have that. And that is the additional screening requirements, not only for the vehicles themselves, but also for the entire perimeter of the property because they're no longer going to be residential property, they're going to be general commercial zone. So it's commercial triggering that screening requirement.
Okay. That's all my questions right now.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? And I don't see any, so we'll bring this, it's time for a, a motion. Commissioner Bates in your district defer to you or, or we can, others can make a motion if there's felt such. I don't see any at this time, but.
Yeah, these are, thank you, Chairman. These are very challenging for a lot of reasons. I, I lived at Forty-Fifth and Tyler for twelve years, seen many of you checking your mailboxes many times and I appreciate that you do work hard and you got a business that you're trying to operate. And so these are incredibly challenging because there are so many interests here that are included and involved. I have some concerns. When I begin to see the map and I begin to see, I begin to see all the different hodgepods that we have of all these different zonings in this area, an area that I live in, it's, it's concerning because people that are wanting rural residential, single-family homes are now faced with all of these, this growth potential that's happening. And some of it is just natural progression of development, but others are enjoyment of life and enjoyment of property. So I understand this is a challenge here in good faith. I, I don't think I can support the change in good faith. So if someone would like to make a motion, I'd stand to listen to the motion.
Okay. Well, my, my question is going to be the, to maybe send it back to M A P C, to planning, just to clarify the correct zoning. What is the correct application? What, what should it include and what is legal and processable by that? I, I'm in agreement with you. I'm kind of, I see why to vote against or why to support. I like what you're trying to do as well, but maybe the confusion around that would incline me to possibly make a motion to send it back to, to M A P C. But we've got, everybody's got an opinion here, so we're going to hear what the commission says. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Well, I had several questions as we moved into this and I'm still not sure that I've got answers that I, I am satisfied with. I think there's some questions about how this should be zoned. There's just too many questions for us to say that we ought to move forward or deny either one of those today. So my preference is to send it back to the M A P C to get the questions answered that really are burning in my mind today so that we can make sure that we're doing the right thing for not only the applicant, but also for the neighbors. It'd be my preference if, if someone wants to make the motion or I can later on after we hear from everyone else. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. So the presentation that we had when we talked about this, this seems to have morphed a little bit different into something that I just don't feel comfortable making a decision on yet. The information has changed today and so I would agree sending it back would be what I'm most comfortable with. I think we do a really good job in this community of supporting our entrepreneurs. So I don't want to, I don't want to say that, that we would not be supportive of you. I also want to say that we listen to neighbors and take all of that into consideration as well. Right now, I don't feel like I have enough information on which way it needs to go just because it's changed so significantly today from when we were briefed on it before. So I would be in favor of sending it back, getting a little bit more clarification on a few things and then bringing it back here for us to make the decision at that point.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the last question that Commissioner Beatty asked is probably a key question here. Based on home-based businesses, I don't, is what I understand is happening here is these folks are running a business and they park their vehicles there at their home overnight. And they're not, they are not doing maintenance on, it's not, it's not a shop to do maintenance on someone else's vehicles. It's not that they're making money by storing vehicles for some other people. So again, vehicle storage, in my opinion, is actually not the right description. So I, I would agree with sending this back because I don't think that's the right description here, but this, this case, it does open up opportunities for some of those things we just described. I mean, they could, under vehicle storage, start renting out the property up to ten, up to a certain, up to ten thousand square feet in size. Actually, I don't know that that's what we want. I don't think that's their intent, but to put, to pass this today, it opens up that possibility and they're not really asking for that. Other part of this also though does protect the neighbors because it talks about signage and billboards. It talks about screening and those are things that are actually positive and they're going to continue doing exactly what they do today. It actually makes it better for the neighbors, maybe not to the degree they would like, but it actually is better because again, screening requirements would, they're, today the screens aren't really adequate. So they have to, they have to make that better. That's just one example. The idea that, I, I think there's some of the information we've received today is actually a little, a little bit inaccurate because it sounds to me like the way it was described by the opponents, that there's vehicles coming and going all day long and this is a huge amount of traffic in and out of this property. I don't think that's what's happening here. They've got four vehicles roughly that leave the property in the morning, come back at noon, leave again, come back in the evening. That's not, that, that's not a huge number of vehicles. And I, I think that we have people in the county that store their semi-truck at their home overnight. It happens all over the place and this is not substantially different than that. So I don't know really why this is even in front of us right now. I think if we're going to have a case, the case maybe should be cleaned up a little bit and again, to protect the, protect the neighbors. But as it's currently written, it actually allows them to do some things right now they're not even asking to do. So I'm not sure I like the way this is written currently, but could we pass it today? I would be fine with passing this today because I actually think that what they're doing and what they're, what they've stated their intent is today is essentially what I think you can do in a home-based, home-based business or just a residential property by storing your work vehicle at your residence at night. So I'm fine with passing it. I'm actually fine with sending it back. I'm kind of indifferent on what we should do here. So if someone makes a motion, I'll probably support it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. I, I will, I'll make a motion that we return the, the zoning request case back to M A P C for clarification of the use of property. Okay? That's my motion.
One second.
Motion in a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay. So applicant, you understand it's going to go back to the zoning and, and I think you hear it enough of the questions and the clarification and the respect to your neighbors and all those things. So good luck and Scott, you guys got it? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item D, C O N twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one nine, conditional use request in the county to permit sand and soil extraction and rock crushing on property zone R R Rural Residential, generally located on the east side of North Ridge Road between West Seventy-seventh Street North and West Eighty, Eighty-Fifth Street North.
Okay. Scott, welcome back.
Thank you. Scott Waidell from the Planning Department. So this case is a little bit unique. We've got some evolving circumstances and I'd like to brief you on that first. So yesterday morning, the Planning Department staff received an email from the agent for the applicant indicating that the applicant would like to defer this item until the County Commission meeting on August ninth. Now, in addition to that, I need to offer you an apology because it was brought to my attention this morning that the G I S information we used as part of this case was incorrect. The two sources, and this is a question that came up during one of the briefings and as I was preparing for this presentation last night, this question kind of rung in my head. Two other sources besides our G I S maps are showing that this property is in the Valley Center urban area of influence and I apologize greatly for that. We did, apparently the G I S information we were using was incorrect. And as a result, in order to be in compliance with Unified Zoning Code, I, I have to recommend that this case be sent back to the Planning Commission in order to allow for Valley Center input and to consider this new information at the Planning Commission level. So those are the two updates. You've got a request from the applicant for a deferral. You have an apology from me about that we apparently were using incorrect G I S data when this case was put together, when the analysis was done. In terms of just a brief overview, just to make sure that anyone who's watching knows what this case is about, the applicant is requesting a conditional use. It's a two-part. One is to allow for mining and querying of sand and soil excavation and the second is for rock crushing. The applicant has requested that the conditional use will allow these to take place at the property for thirty years. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item and voted recommend denial. That vote was seven to three. Multiple individuals attended and commented on the case with concerns that are identified in the staff report in, in detail. Multiple protests were filed against the application totaling thirty-one point three two percent of the protest area and exceeding the state protest threshold of twenty percent. So it would require, any vote to approve would require a super majority of the commission, so four out of five votes. And the staff report provides additional details about the recommended action and potential alternatives. And so that is just a brief summary of the case, just to make sure that everyone who's watching or in attendance is familiar with that. But again, the two items are about the request for the deferral and then second is the recommendations to go back to M A P C.
Okay, Scott. And well, thanks for the clarification and that is recent news because I know in our briefing, I, we had asked, is this in the area of influence of Valley Center and?
I always, I always appreciate your questions and, and the opportunity and we just discovered that this morning.
So with that, we still need to, I have not had any ex parte communications that I recall, other than our staff meeting. Each commissioner should mention something, Commissioner.
Thanks, Chairman. I've had rather significant ex parte communication in regards to just numerous emails, in-person contacts at coffee shops and, and also a phone call. So I'd like to disclose that. I will certainly keep an open mind and am willing to keep an open mind in this case.
Right. Okay. And Commissioner Howell?
And, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have received a staff briefing and I don't believe I've had any other ex parte communication with anybody, opponent or proponent on this case.
Good. And Commissioner Dennis?
I've also received staff briefing, but I don't recall any other staff, ex parte information and I do have an open mind.
And Commissioner Lopez?
The same, just the staff briefing. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, Mr. Wagner, the guidance would be, or I, you know what, we can, okay, I'm a little confused.
Sure.
There are two people that signed up anyway to, to address this. There are two people that signed up anyway to, to address this. We have, we could hear from the applicant to maybe confirm that they wanted to delay this till whatever. Does the applicant want to say something, or what do you, if the applicant could say something, we could let the, the two people that signed up address us. It may be a mute point, but we'll see.
Kirk Sponso, Assistant County Counselor. I think there are multiple routes. You can handle this. First and foremost, if you want to listen to the information presented by the agent, by the interested parties, you could. With that said, there is the potential for you to send the item back to MAPC based on notice requirements. If that does occur, I would point out that down the road in the future, some interested individuals may want to make comments based on the future MAPC meeting as well.
True.
And so, I don't think it's inappropriate if you just want to hold off on those comments until such later date.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Justin Wagner, County Counselor. I'd just supplement what Kirk said. There's no statutory requirement for a public hearing in front of you anyways. I know you traditionally have those, but in light of the circumstances that Scott Wadel described, the applicant's request, I don't think there's any harm to the parties. They'd still be, have an opportunity to be heard, again, in front of the Planning Commission, certainly in front of you if this item comes forward again later. So, I think that's, I don't think there's any issue if you would want to refer it back without a hearing today.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Howell? Or Commissioner Beatty first, I think.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to be clear, Justin. So, there's two options. We can defer based on the request from the applicant, or we can just vote to send it back based on the request of MAPC. Both will accomplish the same thing, but do we need to have a date set in mind of when this is coming back, or, or do we just wait for MAPC? Let me, let me rephrase. If we defer, do we have to have a date in mind? Or, if we, if we give to MAPC, do they establish the date?
That's a good question, Commissioner Beatty. If, if you refer it back to the Planning Commission, planning staff will work to set the date for the appropriate Planning Commission meeting. If you're going to defer for yourselves to hear it, you should pick a date certain that you're going to have that. And I, and I wasn't 100% sure if Scott had mentioned, but I think you would want to allow enough time for the Valley Center Planning Commission to hear this. I, I realize it won't, probably wouldn't be a formal hearing under our urban area of influence, but at the same time, that way, they're not in some way prejudiced by not having an opportunity to opine on the matter. So, if it is being referred back to the Board of County Commissioners, I would suggest you give enough time for Valley Center's Planning Commission to hear this.
Next question. If, out of respect for those that did come today to speak, if they, if they chose to share in a public comment at this point in time, are they precluded from doing that again at another hearing, or?
I, I don't believe they would be, Commissioner Beatty. In light of all these circumstances, if the board wants to hear from them, I think that's kind of the discretion of the board.
Yeah. It would be my, to give the option, if people would like to share today, it would be my preference that we allow that option if they so choose.
Thank, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It would be my preference to send it back to MAPC based on Director Wadel's recommendation. And secondly, I guess I'd like to ask, I think we should ask the, those that signed up to speak, if they intend to come back and they, and they feel like their schedule would support them coming back, I would really prefer to, to hold off on those comments because I think it's out of context. I may have trouble remembering what they said. Also, we would give them five minutes now and five minutes later. It may not be fair to the other, other folks. I just think it's better for them to do this closer to when we have to make a decision. If we do it today, I have them speak, then we have them speak again later. I'm not sure there's a, there's a fairness issue there. I guess if, if they, if they feel like they can't make it back, I would, I would certainly want to see us invite them to speak, to speak now. But, I've got to make a motion on the, on the sending back if that would help. Thank you.
And Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree that if anyone from the public or even the applicant would like to speak today, I have no problem with hearing what they have to say. So, I think the chairman, it'd be my preference to allow the chairman to see if they would like to speak. But, I think the cleanest thing to do, because the only step that's missing, unless I'm wrong, is that the Valley Center has not had an opportunity to weigh in. And I don't know sending it back to the MAC, PC for a complete hearing just for that one step is really necessary. I, I think just a deferral of 30 days or whatever it's going to take for the time for the Valley Center Planning Commission to weigh in would be more than adequate, rather than going back through an entire process of going back to the MAPC. So, actually, my preference would be to defer and also allow this, the, anyone that wants to speak today, but then open it up again when it comes back to us so that they could speak at that time also. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, I think there's a, a feeling of respect for both the applicant and those, the two of you that have signed up to go ahead and hear from you. But, I think we've all heard the discussion that, that what we hear today is probably not, it may not be what the, what the final, the world of the, of the final on this, on this application. So, with that, applicant, do you want to, or representative applicant, you want to address us on anything?
Good morning. Phil Meyer with Boston Company. No, I'm not going to take your time. Our request for deferral was for three weeks. I think that's probably irrelevant. If you're going to send it back to Planning Commission, or if you're going to forward it to Valley Center, that's going to take longer than three weeks. So, I can pull that off the table, and you guys can do whatever you decide is appropriate.
Okay. So, if we defer this as, I guess for legal, if we defer this for 30 or so days, that may not be enough time because we don't know the process time for the Planning Commission to get with Valley Center?
That's, I, I didn't know if planning staff knows when the Valley Center Planning Commission meets. I know a lot of planning commissions for cities meet once a month, so I don't know if there's a timing issue there.
Scott, can you?
Yes, sir. So, there's two, two parts to this conversation. Valley Center, in looking it up last night, it appears that they meet the third week of the month. So, it would be later on in the month. And the second part is, the recommendation to send it back to MAPC is because the zoning code specifies that when it's in an urban area of influence, that the comments from the city's Planning Commission is supposed to go to the planning, to the Wichita Cedric County Planning Commission.
Okay. With that, we invite both of you that have signed up. Do you want to address us at this point, or do you want to?
I don't see the point of this question.
Okay. Okay. Well, know that the commission felt respect that you took the time to be here, and, and, and so you're going to have a couple more bites at the apple. Okay. Okay, so we need to decide, do we, a motion to delay this or a motion to send it back?
I, I think what I heard from Scott Wadel there was, just because of the way the zoning code's set up, is that the urban area of influence input from a city's Planning Commission would be to the planning, the MAPC would be a preference from staff that this would be referred back to the Planning Commission. With adequate time for that to occur, and I think that's, this Scott, okay, I'm seeing him nodding his head, so.
That probably makes, makes sense. Without any other comment, I'll make a, a motion that, that we return this item to the Planning Commission for overall clarification. Is that, is that a motionable word I could use? Okay.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Planning. Thank you, citizens, for being here. Apologize for the, for the delay. Okay. Next item, please.
Item E, capital improvement program amendment creating project R374 to construct an intersection conflict warning system at the intersection of 21st Street North and 167th Street West.
Okay. Mr. Packard, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, I am Lynn Packer, your Director of Public Works and county engineer. We are here today to talk about a low to moderate cost traffic warning system that can be used at two-way stop controlled intersections. As you can see on the screen, it's called an intersection conflict warning system. The intersect, the ICWS is also what's commonly referred to. Civil engineers, we're not that much different from the military. We lack our acronyms. You'll hear several of them here through this presentation. We think this is a good fit for 21st and 167th. So, today, this intersection is two-way stop controlled. We have, on the, what we call the minor leg, which is 167th, has the stop signs, and it's uncontrolled, no stop signs through traffic on 21st Street, which we call the major leg. The traffic is slightly moderate, but per the manual and uniform traffic control devices, again, another acronym, the MUTCD, it does not warrant traffic, a traffic signal or a four-way stop condition based on our more, most recent traffic study. So, 167th today, this is what the approaches look like. The southbound and the northbound routes are exactly the same. We have the advanced, two exact, advanced warning signs, and we have quite a decorative stop sign at the intersection. The ICWS appears to be a good addition to this. We've already deployed larger stop signs, that's a 48-inch stop sign there. We've added advanced warning signs, as you can see in the photos. We've added flashing beacons. We've added the vertical reflective red strips at the stop sign. However, the crash rate still continues to be unacceptable at this intersection. We think this is an appropriate next step in a warning system that keeps us operating within the guidelines of the MUTCD. It also does not replace any of the signs that are out there right now. This will be in addition to those signs that are out there. We've, we have considered rumble strips here, but the location does not meet our use guidelines, and the closest residents have overwhelmingly asked us to seek other alternatives to the noise generated by the rumble strips. ICWSes can be constructed relatively quickly. That is another benefit. We don't have to change the configuration of the intersection. We don't have to get into any pavement cuts. Everything can be do, done from the side of the road. It takes a little, little bit of time, but it's, the parts, but what I like about this the most is, the parts and pieces for this can mostly be recycled and used in standard traffic signal operations. They can also be used in flashing beacons and other locations. So, I like the fact that if we choose that this is not a good fit for the intersection, it's not money wasted. It's money that we're going to eventually spend at other locations anyways to repair parts and signs and everything. So, the ICWS was specifically designed for two-way stop controlled intersections. It's mostly deployed in rural applications, and it has varying condition, varying configurations. The idea is to provide an additional layer of warning to drivers on 21st Street that's not static or constant. Flashing yellow lights operate only when a potential conflicting traffic is detected on 167th. Drivers on 167th also have an additional layer of warning in the form of alternating flashing lights that are on constantly at the intersection along with an additional stop sign. Right now, there are more than 40 states have implemented the ICWS system in one form or another over the past 15 years or so. In 2016, the Federal Highway Administration conducted a study that calculated a benefit cost ratio of 27 to 1 at two-lane to two-lane intersections, and that's what we have here. Two lanes on 21st Street with two lanes on 167th. They've also indicated that an ICWS can reduce severe crashes at intersections by 20 to 30%. A question has been asked about power outages and how this affects the intersection. At this time, we're not planning on adding a battery backup with the configuration. It's relatively expensive, and the ICWS is not a regulatory device, nor is it the primary advanced warning device. In the case of power outage, the flashes will just not operate. But, all regulatory and other advanced warning signs will remain intact. Regulatory signs, as you may understand, are the controlling devices out there. However, a battery backup can be added at a later date, anytime if we deem it's desired. So, getting back to why we are here today, Public Works recommends approving the CIP amendment to fund a project to construct the ICWS at the intersection of 21st and 167th. And I stand available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Lynn, thank you very much. This is a very interesting intersection, and the fact that you can see forever, every direction. They, but it has a number of fatalities at this intersection. It continues to have fatalities. And the reason, in my opinion, and I'm not an engineer, is because of driver error. Because if you stop at a stop sign and you look both ways at up and down 21st Street, and there's cars coming, you're going to stay stationary, and if there's not, then you can move across safely. But, that's not what's happening today. And after the last fatality that we had there, and I've just been dreading, worrying about when we can do something more at this intersection so we don't have another fatality, and that's my goal, is to make sure we don't have another fatality at this intersection. But, we had a press conference here where we discussed it. And over the last several months, we've, I've been personally talking with Public Works, trying to figure out what we could do. And Public Works came up with this pilot program. And I know that you briefed us that you're not going to have power backup, but again, it's a pilot program, and I can live with that. In a pilot program, if later on we figure out that this is something that is needed at that location, then we're going to have to rethink and see if we can, going to need some power backup. But, a couple things. We did look at, at rumble strips. And the, the neighbors, rumble strips are noisy. And granted, there are things, and I did some research on the internet, and there are rumble strips that aren't quite as noisy. They're sinusoidal, whatever that, but the problem with them, on the studies that I read, is that because they're not noisy for the neighbors, they're not also as apt to ident, have the driver recognize that, that there's something happening. And so, they're not really highly recommended in the studies that I took a look at. In addition, we did ask Lynn and Public Works to go out and talk to the neighbors. See, could you put up with the noise if we put some rumble strips in? And they were not inclined to put up with trucks going across rumble strips at 3:00 in the morning when they're trying to sleep. So, I, I have some issues there. Probably the best solution in the future is, is a roundabout. And the estimates of a roundabout are over a million dollars. And it's going to take its time to acquire the, the land because it takes more land than an intersection takes. It's going to, to take more engineering and so forth. And so, that solution is several years away. And so, if we wait for that type of a solution, how many more deaths are we going to have at this intersection? And one death is too many. We have to do something because one death is absolutely too many. A question has arose, is do we need to defer this and, and have the public weigh in on it? Well, I think the public's weighed in pretty heavily because after the last fatality, we had, I had over 80 emails with people demanding action immediately. And we can't do things immediately. We have to staff this. We have to move forward in a very logical manner. And that's what we're doing today, is we've heard from the public. In addition, if we thought that the public was interested and didn't think this was a good idea, I saw a very good description of this on Channel 3 yesterday. They went through and, and explained your whole concept, even with drawings and diagrams and showing it all, how it all works out. I saw a nice description of it on Channel 12, and they covered it also. So, between those two TV stations and all of the emails, and I'm actually getting emails still, I just had another one again this morning, the public's weighed in on it. So, I, again, this is a pilot program. Every single piece that's in this can be reused somewhere else if we find that this is not the solution that we're looking for. So, I, I know it cost $150,000, and I'm asking my fellow commissioners, please support something like this because we cannot afford another death at that intersection. And delays could cause us another death at that intersection. So, at the appropriate time, if no one else has anything to say, I'd like to make a motion to approve this. Thank you.
Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Dennis and Chairman. Lynn, I understand the sense of urgency here, and I also understand the value of a pilot program to inform us of some future actions. Do we have a list of some sort, or do we have an idea of what intersections that we manage in the county would be deemed as what we would call a dangerous intersection or a high collision accident or areas of? high collision accident, or areas of, intersections of interest that we should identify, that we need to have our eyes on, so that a pilot program, whatever pilot program we work towards in the future, that we can extend and move quickly with the system? Do we have that list?
We have identified intersections that we have, our traffic engineer has watched. In addition to that, we are, this summer, going to get the final report back from a consultant hired by KDOT to do a local road safety plan. That plan will come back with intersections, what they call segments, road segments, and curved roads, that they have identified in one form or another as being higher and lower risk. And we will get, they will also identify, obviously, and they're actually gonna rate every single intersection in the county, every single road segment in the county. So, it won't just be high priority or high vehicles per day, it's going to be every intersection, and we'll have a complete list.
That's exactly what I was looking for. That's helpful, thanks. What was the timeframe on that again?
It was due by the end of June, and we haven't seen it yet, so I'm hoping very soon.
Government, yeah. Thanks.
Commissioner Hal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of questions and comments, but I'd like to start off by saying, I've been doing some study on the ICWS system, the collision warning system. And one of the statistics, which I don't remember the exact details at this moment, but it talked about rural paved intersection accidents are generally fairly high on the list of fatality accidents really across the country. So, it's not just a local problem. This is, when you see two-lane highway, two-lane road, fairly high speed, 55 or higher, intersected by another paved road where it's a two-way stop, that's a configuration that causes serious injury and accident, serious injury or even fatality if someone doesn't do the right thing there. And so, you know, years ago, a couple of years ago, we had, our Citizens Advisory Board did a study in District 5, trying to find intersections that would kind of meet this configuration. We want to look at accident data at those intersections, and we used to have an app called What's Going On. Unfortunately, the CAD system that we have right now doesn't provide the right data for that application to work right now, so it's been taken down. But when that application was available, we could look at accident data, and you could see intersections in District 5 especially, where this was, you know, lots and lots of accidents. I think the worst accidents in Sedgwick County, according to that application, were in District 5. And so we wanted to be proactive, and rather than waiting for an accident to, where people demand us to do something, because we've just had an accident, which is, again, I've been here eight years, I'm in my ninth year, that's typically what happens. I can name intersections, 335th West and 79th Street is a great example. They put rumble strips in there, they weren't maintained, it created a liability question. And in fact, we had to pay out recently because of a liability lawsuit, because we failed to maintain rumble strips that were installed, not according to MUTCD, but they were installed because, I think, of political pressure. I think it maybe was the right thing to do at the time, to put those rumble strips in, but because it wasn't warranted by the MUTCD, and we failed to maintain that standard, created a liability question. So I think we have legislation we need to work on, I'll continue to bring this up, legislation that says if you meet or exceed MUTCD minimum standards, that liability shall not be borne by the governing agency, even if they fail to maintain those higher standards of what we consider to be deemed safety improvements of the intersection. But there's been a reluctance to do more at intersections because of liability. And I don't mean that to criticize anybody in our county, but when we look at intersections and we say we should do something, there's sometimes reluctance. We have political pressure from people in the community to do something. And again, we go back to the warrants, they started the intersection, do a traffic study, they come back and say, this is warranted for whatever improvement, or it's not warranted for any improvement. And that's typically the process that we follow. And intersections where we've added some mitigations, it's because of accidents that have happened, and usually it's the commissioner pushes forward, if you will, a solution that we want, sometimes despite the opposition of staff, because they, again, they go by the science book, and we're doing something because we just believe it just needs to happen. So, I have a number of questions. First of all, back to the particular intersection of today's topic, have you done a traffic study, and what exactly was warranted at this intersection?
We did do, we've done, I believe, we've done at least two, if not three, traffic studies over the years at this intersection, at 21st and 167th. The latest one was done earlier this year, at the beginning of the year, and at that time, what was warranted was additional advanced warning signs. None of the eight warrants were met for a traffic signal, and it did not meet the warrant for a four-way stop.
What about a roundabout?
There is no specific warrant for a roundabout, as far as I am aware. However, our traffic engineer identified a roundabout as a potential long-term solution.
So, in terms of fatalities, at this particular intersection, I think we've had three fatalities in the last 10 years. That's the data that I've seen. And I guess that was three separate accidents, is that correct?
Yes.
And?
I believe two, maybe, but I'm...
So, maybe two separate accidents?
Two or three, yeah.
It may have been two. And again, I've asked for the accident date at this intersection, I've not received it Do we know the, as these accidents continue to happen at this intersection, do we ever create a conclusion as to what caused the accident, that we say that this person on this direction didn't do something right? What did they do wrong specifically? Is that analyzed that way?
We have, it is not, we use the information obtained from the Sheriff's Department. We have been able to rule out night driving. I think the earliest accident or crash we've had out there was 6:00 something in the morning, but it was during a time when that was lit by the sun. The rest of accidents have occurred during the day. Only one of the accidents that did result in two fatalities was DUI. The rest of accidents were due to, just under the general term of either what they call distracted driving or dismissive driving.
Or inattentive driving, probably, you know, we all know, we see it all the time, it's people on their cell phones, right? So, it sounds like we've had two incidents where there were fatality accidents in 10 years, and one of them was a double fatality. There are, there's lots of intersections across the county where there are, and I hate to say this, but there are fatality accidents at other intersections across the county as well, and it does happen. So if this is deemed successful, do we plan on putting this type of system in at each intersection that has fatality accidents? I mean, what's the trigger for putting this system in at other places across the county?
We would, this would be something we deem just to be successful. It's something, a term we like to use in the department, is it's a tool we can add to the toolbox. Each individual intersection is its own animal. Each individual road is. They all have different characteristics. They might be, you might have two intersections that are both two-way stop-controlled, but based on their conditions, where they're at, the type of traffic, all affects how we treat the intersection and the road itself. So we would look at it as, if this is successful, we would look at it for potential future applications. It would not go in at every two-way stop-controlled intersection that has a fatality or a serious crash. We would look at it, because the MUTCD does have specific guidelines that has us basically ramping up the warning signs and warning devices in use based on crash data that is available. So, it's not recommended to just throw everything at an intersection or a roadway. It just breeds...
And yet, this intersection has a stop, cross-traffic-do-not-stop sign, a stop-ahead sign, intersection-head sign, illumination, 48-inch stop signs, flashing red beacons. It has all the...
Those have been applied over the years.
Right. And so this has everything, it even has reflectors on the posts to hold the signs up. So, we've done about everything we can do, basically at the intersection, with sign engine and flashing lights. I understand this particular system, you plan on installing an overhead stop sign and another flashing light on 167th.
Correct.
And on 21st Street, the plan is that there'll be nothing lit up. Curiously, is the sign itself an illuminated sign, or is it just a sign that says, you know, cross-traffic detected, and the flashing beacon comes on when cross-traffic's detected? Or is the sign itself illuminated?
We have not drawn the plans as yet, but one of the options would be, it would be, that we would look at, it would either be a side-mounted, a typical street on the side of the road, street sign on the side of the street. It would either be a sign that would be illuminated for notifying when, only illuminated when conflicting traffic is detected, or it would be basically, again, an overhead flashing yellow beacons that would notify them.
So, the majority of the accidents that happen at this intersection, can I generally summarize that the majority of these accidents have been someone on 167th did the wrong thing? 21st Street is a victim to someone on 167th failing to stop or pulling out when they should not have pulled out, or, in other words, person on 167th did something wrong, and the one person on 21st Street became a victim of the other person doing something wrong. Can we say that?
I think, in general, that can be surmised. However, each crash is its own. I don't know, I have not looked at the crash history, details from the Sheriff's Report, to indicate whether there was ever someone from 21st Street that was cited for error. And that may have happened.
Again, so I'm talking in general terms. Just, I understand about this intersection.
But in general terms, being the fact that 167th is the two-way stop, and 21st has a through...
And so we're gonna go from one flashing light, one stop sign at 167th in each direction, to two flashing lights and two stop signs in each direction, one of those sets being, pairs being overhead. That's the main change. So if someone's driving along, and they're texting, or they're drunk, we don't really know if that's gonna really do anything to wake them up and get them to pay attention. We don't have any data to...
No.
We're just doubling up on our warning to them.
We are. The main purpose of this warning system is to provide an additional layer of advanced warning to the traffic on 21st Street, to be aware. What we like about it is, it's not constant, it's not consistent, it's not always flashing yellow. It's only gonna flash yellow when that traffic is detected. That is, just looking at the human factors, that's something that's going to gain attention. And in addition, I, State of Iowa, did a study, we found here recently, that had indicated that of the municipalities that were utilizing the ICWS, they found the major road had about a, just under 5% reduction in speed, because of the fact that they were realizing that they had seen something, they were coming up in an intersection that had the advanced warning sign, additional advanced warning signs, and that's a good thing out here. This is a 55 mile an hour on both roads, minor and major. The 85th percentile speed limit is 64 and 65 miles an hour. They're flying way too fast.
I'm not that familiar with 21st Street of this area. How long is a stretch there that there's no stop signs? It's part of long distances.
135th is a stop condition with a, potential stop condition with a signal. And I believe it is non-stop through 247th?
I think 391st.
It might be 391st.
So it's a number of miles?
It is.
Quite a few miles, okay. And again, westbound traffic may be in a day, I'm sorry, eastbound traffic may be in a days especially, because they've been traveling for five miles on a uninterrupted road, so. Just a couple of ideas. And I'm going to say upfront, I don't know that I agree with the action as has been presented today. We have not tried yellow flashing lights on the intersection warning sign on 21st Street. We've not tried that. That's a thing we could do. I would, you're welcome to disagree with me, but I don't think that every four-way stop in Sedgwick County was warranted. I believe there's places where there's four-way stops, where it's fairly rural, and we maybe have had accidents in the past, and possibly that's why we have a four-way stop there today. We go back in history, I don't know how far back we have to go, and we don't have a lot of data really available to us. But I just anecdotally, I can tell you, there's four-way stops. I'm familiar with in my district, that there appears to be very little traffic, and yet there's a four-way stop there. So, the concern that a four-way stop is gonna create more accidents, is which I hear, the reason why we don't want to do a four-way stop, is it creates more accidents. I mean, just in transition from a two-way stop to a four-way stop, we'd have message boards to warn people that the configuration of their sections changed, please stop ahead. And those message boards might need to be there for a period of time, three to six months, however long it takes, until people are familiar with the reconfigured intersection. But I think, what's a four-way stop, if you were to change this to a four-way stop, what would be the total cost to make that configuration change?
We calculated that with advanced warning signs, and assuming we were gonna use flashers on 21st Street like we have on 167th, it's about $6,000.
$6,000, and yet this is $125,000.
Estimated, yes.
Okay. So, and we know that on 167th, there's already gonna be people stopping, or supposed to be stopping, so if there's any rare-end accidents going north and south, this doesn't really change that. It's the traffic on 21st Street that's used to not stopping, it would suddenly have to stop.
Potentially, yes.
And we would expect potentially some accidents on 21st Street as a consequence of the reconfiguration.
That is correct.
Okay.
I will just add in there, as a matter of fact, because of the situation we're under, being that a four-way stop has not been warranted under the mandatory form of traffic control devices, it is not our recommendation to go to a four-way stop in this location. Another reason we feel strongly about not going to four-way stop is, the traffic at this particular intersection is what we call familiar traffic. You always end up with some people who are not familiar with an area, traveling somewhere, but the majority of the traffic in this intersection is familiar traffic. They're used to a certain condition. When you change that, it's very hard to change those habits in the beginning.
And again, that's why the message boards would be necessary, and I think we'd have to do something to help change the habits of those...
Yes, it is.
I get that.
The biggest thing is, we want to stay in compliance with the MUTCD.
So, if it weren't for the residential homes right near the intersection, and by the way, you say near them, there may be, I don't, they're 1,000 feet away, they're not right there. They're distance away.
Yeah, 700, 750.
Okay, so 750 feet away. One of the studies I read on rumble strips was, there was a study that talked about the noise component. And rumble strips, what they provide here, that we're not really talking about, is it wakes up the driver. It vibrates the car a little bit, and makes a noise that they might be able to hear inside the car.
Yes.
Okay? And that actually wakes them up, and that is, it's an advantage over simply just a flashing light. It's already there, right? Waking the driver up, letting them know there's a stop ahead, is a way to get their attention. And that's something that the rumble strips do that nothing else we've talked about so far can do. The study that I read talks about the depth of the cuts, and there's subsurface, and then there's rumble strips that are above surface. But the frequency, the width of the cuts, the depth of the cuts, the shape of the cuts, how many cuts there are, those are all factors in the noise. And there are studies that talk about ways to wake up the driver, minimize the noise.
Correct.
And I think that, again, scientifically, there's a study out there that talks about how to do this. They also talk about sinusoidal rumble strips. I know we say they're hard to install, hard to maintain, but the idea there is that the tires don't leave the pavement if they're traveling at a reasonable speed. If they travel faster than that, it actually does a little bit more, it's more noticeable to the driver because they run too fast.
Correct. And I will note, sinusoidal rumble strips have been brought up here twice now. I will note, sinusoidal rumble strips are not for transverse applications, they are for edge line and center line only. They do not have an application for what we call transverse or the stop condition.
There's also the idea of a high-speed, high-speed speed bump. Now, I say speed bump, we're talking something that's fairly flat, half an inch in height, maybe a foot in length, could be longer, three feet in length, that has a ramp on the front end and the back end of that, so there's no noise. But it does, you can color that, it can be subsurface, or it can be above the surface, and you can color it different colors to wake up the driver. Now, it's almost like if you drive down the street where you're doing some overlay, and they carve out the asphalt, and there's a sign that says bump, and you go down into an area of the asphalt that's being carved out. I can tell you, every time I go over one of those, I feel it, okay? So, that's the idea, that we, again, would wake up the driver, but possibly doesn't make any noise. Again, it serves a different purpose, and it would be relatively inexpensive, almost free, to install that. So, that's another idea. So let me just state it front, we talk about the public's awareness of this. I think all of us, if someone accuses me of wanting to kill human beings, please understand, that's not true. I am willing to support a program that's effective and efficient for the taxpayers to save lives, and I've been the most proactive commissioner up here begging my colleagues to hear me on improvements in my district, and I've hit a deaf ear. And I'm very frustrated as a commissioner. I want an effective solution, but I also want it to be efficient for the taxpayers, efficient and effective, but cost-aware. And if we install a $125,000 experiment at this intersection, I don't know what that leads us down the road. This is a different direction. And because it's a different direction, let me say one other thing. One of the studies I read on this talks about driver confusion. They don't know what a sign, if it's not illuminated, they don't know what that sign means if it's not flashing. There's confusion by the driver. They slow down sometimes, other drivers then get frustrated because they don't know why they're slowing down. There's an issue of timing. If you pull up there and you slow down a small amount, and you blow through the intersection on 167th, it triggers the light to flash on 21st. Now the drivers on 21st are pulling up, and they're, for 30 seconds or however long we determine, it could be a minute, it could be 40, it could be 15 seconds, we don't know. But for a period of time, that light's flashing on 21st, and they can see, because it's a clear, open intersection, there's no one there. So now that... So now they're beginning to distrust the lights because they know that sometimes the lights are flashing and there's no one there. There's also, uh, a flashing light, people don't know what that means. If, if you're not familiar with one of these and you pull up on the intersection, driver confusion is a big problem on 21st Street. And on 167th, there's really no significant change in configuration here.
Correct.
So we're talking about asking people on 21st to be more defensive because of more awareness. And there's things we have not tried yet. Let me say, and finally, um...
Finally, let's go.
I'm sorry. We don't know what the, we don't know what the pass fail criteria is. I talked to you yesterday, you said we, we'd try this for three years.
We are still looking at a class fail, we're, we're looking at a fail criteria. Obviously, if it doesn't hit the fail criteria, it would pass. Uh, but in general, an intersection at this location, uh, according to the Highway Safety Manual, should have a crash rate of just under one, uh, crash per year. Um, we would be looking at that and, uh, I believe we are at, according to the 2016 and the 2019 data, we're at 3.8. We need to get updated data on that, but we need, obviously, our goal is to get closer. We want zero, everyone wants zero. So we want to get back that.
You can make two more points, Chairman, and I'll be done. Again, so I think the, the, the community needs to know what we're doing. We're spending taxpayer money. It's a lot of money. It's 125, and is it worth to save a life? Absolutely. If it saves a life, but I'm afraid it's going to cause more accidents. I'm afraid there's going to be an accident where someone's going to say, that caused the accident, and now the county's liable. I've, I've read MUTCD, I can't even find Internet Conflict Warning System is not even a term in the, in the manual.
It is being discussed now, it is not directly discussed, it is lumped in under, uh, additional advanced warning devices.
Okay. And let me just say this, Minnesota is one, and you, you already mentioned, across the nation, everyone's experimenting with these, they are actually in Kansas, too. We can learn from other people's experiment. Minnesota installed 56 of these by federal grant. And after 10 years, they're taking them all back out again. Here's the statement, it says.
Well, I will, they're not taking them out, they're just not adding additional.
That's fine. It says, quote, "We were hoping they would work." The M dot traffic engineer Derek Luer said of the rural intersection conflict warning system, "We could not find they significantly reduced app crashes." They have 56 of these. The data doesn't support this idea that this is going to solve the problem. So if you really want to solve, uh, life and safety issues at this intersection, this is an experiment, it's expensive, and I don't think it's going to solve the problem. In fact, I think it's going to make it worse. Mr. Chairman, I, I ask for the public to understand this. Uh, I know Channel 3 did a, a story on this, they failed to interview me on my concerns. I didn't just wake up this morning and decide I'm going to vote yes or no on this. I've been studying this for three months. So I think the public has a right to know, we're about to spend a lot of money on a different direction. And do, do they think this is the right answer? I honestly think we could try a different kind of rumble strip, one that's a single strip across the road that doesn't make noise. And there is a way to do that, I believe. We could talk about yellow flashing lights on the stop ahead sign. We could actually put in a four-way stop, and I would absolutely support that. I think the four-way stop is, by the way, by the way, the best way to go is, and by the way, a four-way stop, why is it better? Because it takes two people to ignore the traffic controls for a fatality accident to happen. Show me the last time we had a four-way stop where two people conflicted in the intersection at high speed enough to kill one or two of them. It doesn't happen very often. Now, are going to be rear-end accidents, fender benders, absolutely. But in trying to, trying to save lives, I think the four-way stop is the best option. I've said plenty, I, I would, I'm not even going to make a motion to defer, I think this is a mistake. I'll be, I'll be voting no because I think there's better ideas out there. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Lynn, thank you so much for being here. I just have a couple of, uh, just really quick questions and, and you've covered it, I just want to make sure I have my information correct. How many states has this been implemented in already?
Uh, to the best of our knowledge, at least 40 states within the state. I'm not saying the state DOT, but within the state, a municipality or the DOT has, uh, implemented, uh, at least one, uh, ICWS.
And what was the percentage of decrease in, um, in wrecks that you saw?
Uh, FHWA has said overall, and I, and I guess I will qualify this, it's been a reduction in serious accidents, uh, by 20 to 30%. Uh, it, you could still have minor accidents that are, uh, not included in that number.
So while this is a pilot to us, I mean, realistically, we know what the outcome could potentially be because we've seen data from other areas. Um, and this is in Commissioner Dennis's district, we all have intersections that we have concern about, and not all intersections this is going to be the best option for. Um, so I, I am really happy that we're doing something about this intersection and we've heard so much about it. And it is clearly a dangerous one for whatever the reason is, because as Commissioner Dennis stated, it's a very open area, so it has to be, uh, driver error. But I'm, I'm interested to see the results from this. I think it's a really responsible way to go about it, um, because if we don't see the outcome we want, um, we can reuse all of this equipment, so it's not like we're just throwing it away if it doesn't work. Um, and I look forward to seeing, like I said, the outcome of what we get from this and then potentially, how can we use something similar in other areas and other districts, um, because we all, like I said, have, have those concerning ones. But appreciate all the work that's gone into this. Uh, thank you for being here and we'll vote on this as soon as we're ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. First of all, thanks to everyone in Public Works that have been working on this very diligently. Uh, I know that it's taken some time and, uh, we wanted to make sure that we did what was best for the community. Uh, I know we've taken several, uh, counts out there and we could measure speeds. We actually took another count back away from the stop signs to see what kind of speeds people were going into those stop signs at. And we found that there was a lot of people go into those stop signs without ma, having any intention of stopping. Uh, so, uh, there's an issue out there, it's, it's driver errors. I started this discussion. Uh, and again, thanks to Public Works for coming up with, uh, with something that we can move forward with, with a pilot program and see how it works. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the capital improvement amendment creating CIP R374 to construct an intersection conflict warning system at the intersection of 21st Street North and 167th Street West. Thank you.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Beatty.
Hi.
Commissioner Howe.
No.
Chairman Meitzner.
Bye. Thanks, Lynn. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, funding agreement with Exploration Place for $2 million for EP2 capital campaign.
Okay. Hi, Tim.
Good morning, Commissioner, uh, Chairman and Commissioners, Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. On April 19th of this year, we received a project update from Patrick Goble and Ex, and the Exploration Place Board regarding their exciting new plans to activate the outdoor space surrounding their iconic facility. The project proposal called EP2 includes a number of exciting additions to Exploration Place, including plans for a world-class destination playscape. Plan also includes, uh, construction of a riverfront amphitheater, an early childhood education center, and indoor renovations. Exploration Place staff and board members have been very busy in terms of grant writing and fundraising activities. They have secured grant awards and donation commitments of over $10 million to date toward this project. After staff review, I have a funding agreement for a capital campaign contribution in the amount of $2 million for the current year for your consideration. This funding would be transferred from a reserve account to the Exploration Place Fund Center and spent from there. With us today is the current Exploration Place, Place Board Chairman, Gail Malone, Chairperson, Gail Malone. I would invite her up to say a few words. And, uh, before I bring Ms. Malone up, I'd also like to point out that we've got a number of other EP Board Members and other community supporters with us today. After your discussion, my recommendation would be for you to proceed as you deem appropriate, including authorizing the chair to sign the proposed agreement and approve any necessary budget transfers. Be happy to answer any questions, but I'd like to turn it over to Gail.
Thanks, Tim. Good morning, Gail.
Good morning.
And thanks for, uh, being patient as we get to this item, so.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and I want to thank you all so much. I'm going to speak to you briefly because you've heard all about our presentation and what we're looking forward in EP2. But I want to, most importantly, thank you on behalf of the Board of Directors and the staff at EP. I want to thank you for your continued support over all these years. The partnership that we have formed and strengthened over the years has really, really been a key element in our success. Our fiscal year ended June 30th and we had one of the best years yet to come, setting the stage for EP2. EP2 will be a wonderful addition to our community and especially to its citizens. I want to thank you again for your continued support and our partnership. With us today is Jason Gregory from GWP, and I'd like to ask him to come up and say a few words.
Morning, Jason.
Good morning. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, my name's Jason Gregory. I'm here representing downtown Wichita and the Greater Wichita Partnership, um, to support this project. Uh, our address is 505 East Douglas, for the record. Exploration Place has cast a bold vision for an outdoor destination playscape and entertainment experience along our riverfront. And once completed, this unique community asset will catalyze further development along the riverfront and throughout the urban core. Project Downtown, our master plan of development, continues to guide us as we revitalize Wichita's urban core and the proposed destination's playscape. At Exploration Place will be a tremendous addition to that effort. As a community, we must strive for excellence when it comes to major civic projects like this one. Our peer communities, our competitive communities are making these types of investments and it's paying dividends for them. Wichita, this county and this region deserves projects like this. We deserve it for our own community pride, but also for our visitors and potential new talent considering Cedric County for their next move. Our industry and business leaders, and we hear this over and over as we attract and recruit new businesses to this region, they emphasize the importance of improving the quality of life for our workforce recruitment and retention. Our companies compete for talent across the globe and we must continue to invest in quality of life assets to remain competitive. This project will be a remarkable addition to our quality of life offerings and we need projects like this to attract and retain a strong workforce. So I would ask that you support the request before you today for the Destination Playscape project at Exploration Place. And again, thank you for the opportunity to present these remarks.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks for all the work you do. Okay, um, Commissioner Howe.
Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, uh, spent time trying to figure out how to provide, uh, additional, uh, revenue to provide, uh, what they need for this project. Just a couple of reminders, uh, what's the total cost of this project? Not just, uh, government funding, but, uh, total cost of the entire project is how much?
Approximately 25 million.
25. And how much do they have currently? With our $2 million commitment, what do they have currently?
If we would add $2 million, they'd be just over 12 million in pledges and grants.
And I understand there's, there's donors out there that are waiting to see what we do here. But, uh, do we have an expected date when this might start, uh, being constructed?
Um, Phase 1, including amphitheater, will begin construction, I believe, later this year. And so it's a phased project, but, um, Phase 1 will begin this year.
Okay. I've been here, uh, since 2015 and I don't know what the funding, I had the funding changed prior to that, I should have probably looked that up, but, uh, typically, uh, our organizations typically see a small tweak in their funding usually every year. And I, what's made this interesting is since 2015, actually 2016 to, through our 2024 recommended budget, uh, their operations funding from Cedric County has been flat at $2,220,140. And it's been flat, this, in other words, this 2024, if we adopt the budget as is, it would be the eighth year in a row, that they'd be, they would be flat. And, uh, just a few weeks ago, maybe a month or two ago, when you guys presented the, the plan for the playscape project, I, I believe I heard all five Commissioners pledge their support to this project. And I, that's what I heard. And, uh, um, one thing that, uh, came to us today was a, is a proposal for 2 million. I, I think that if we, we could do that. I think that right now, e, even that 2 million might be a little harder on our budget. Uh, we have budget challenges this year, we have them every year. Um, I am supportive of, of the project, but I, I think there's a better way. And let me go back in time and just say, um, I don't know that I agree with the idea of holding, holding the Exploration Place flat all those years, I think that that's been a mistake. And to correct that today, I have a, I have proposed, if you will, a different funding scheme. Uh, I would like to see us adjust their 2023 funding from $2,220,140, increase that this year to $2,620,000 even. That's an increase of $399,860 or an 18% increase. And then from, that, that would call, I would call that their base funding, uh, operation budget for, uh, including the salary of their direct, of, of Adam Smith, their director, their executive president, I should say. Um, and then for the next 10 years, starting 2024 through 2020, 2024 through 2033, a 2% adjustment in their funding from Cedric County. Collectively, over the, uh, 10-year period, uh, after 2024 begins, through 2023, they'd have a total of $7,634 increase over that period of time. If you add in the additional funding for 2023, that'd be, uh, $7.46 million. And so that's a way to get there. Uh, I know that's going to require a series of, of motions potentially if this passes at all. But I'd ask, I, I did give a, a shot across the bow, bow to both our CFO as well as our attorney to have them help me walk, walk me through the motions necessary to, uh, for the Commissioners to consider that. Let me pass these out, see if you guys have any questions or comments. If I hear that there's a lot of opposition to this, I guess we can, we can, um, take it up another time potentially, but I'd like to see we can do some of this today. So I'm, I'm willing to make motions today if that, if that's, uh, if that's agreeable to anybody else. And for the record, um, although we've been thinking about this for several months, I didn't actually have the chance to actually talk to EP, uh, EP, um, representatives until just yesterday, uh, late morning. And so this, this plan, they get developed since then. I apologize to my colleagues for not having this out, uh, prior to right now, but as we consider this $2 million uh, donation to this project, I think this, we have to talk about this now because I think this is a different way of handling the same problem. Um, this actually provides more revenue, uh, I think it's better for EP to, to fund this out of operations funding rather than from a single, one-time gift. So I'll stand for questions and see if there's anybody having comments about that. If not, then I'll be making some motions here to hopefully get us into the right position to make this happen today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And since we've all received a copy of this, this is public document now? Okay?
Yes, it is, Chairman.
Okay. You can go ahead and have it. Okay, uh, Commissioner Dennis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And, uh, thanks to all the folks that are from Exploration Place that have worked on this. I'm on record numerous times of expressing that Exploration Place and Cedric County Zoo, excuse me, seven. Exploration Place and Cedric County Zoo are jewels in our community. And, uh, they are necessary, just as, uh, uh, GWP mentioned, uh, to make sure that we attract and retain the people that we need to, to fill the workforce and to make our community, uh, vibrant. As, as we've been looking through the requests that came, uh, from Exploration Place, uh, the, the total cost was going to be almost prohibitive to, to the county. So I, I appreciate, uh, the manager and, uh, our CFO and all of our staff for, for looking through what we can do. But I understand that some of the funding that, uh, is coming from us is necessary for grant match that they're going to need for other places. And I want to make sure that, uh, we help them guarantee those grant matches that are coming from other locations. Uh, but I also realize that, uh, there's a couple of things, uh, and Adam Smith can verify this, uh, when we had a reception for him when he was, uh, chosen to, uh, lead Exploration Place, uh, over at the Wichita Art Museum, I, I actually asked him at that night if we could start drawing down the amount of, uh, funding that comes out of Cedric County and, and he was hoping that we could do that. So a proposal like we saw today actually increases the, the amount of money going, uh, to Exploration Place. It's the opposite of what I was, uh, hoping that we could do for the future. In addition, and, and really one of the reasons that I was thinking through this is that, uh, if you look at the future, uh, we don't own the land underneath, uh, the building and, uh, we're going to transfer this over to the city of Wichita in the future. But in the meantime, it, it is our responsibility. So we need to make sure that we take the lead to, to, uh, grow EP2, uh, maintain EP and do what's necessary for the future. So my proposal would be to increase this to 2.5 million one time and move forward with that so that they can get the grant match that they're needed to make this a reality in the future. And I've talked to our CFO about this. My worry is, what do we not know we're going to be facing in the future? We know that out of 2023 funds, and that's what we'd be using, we can afford the 2.5 million. I can't tell you what's going to happen in the future, especially 10 years or so into the future. So I am very reticent to obligate the future commission to something that, that may cause them hardship. So at the appropriate time, I would be happy to make a motion to approve this funding at the level of 2.5 million. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you so much. I agree with what Commissioner Dennis just mentioned. I don't think 2.5 necessarily gets us to where Exploration Place is wanting to get to, and I think that there's a larger conversation that needs to happen about future funding for this project. But today, we're talking about the 2023 impact and only that. And so I agree that 2.5 gets us as one step closer to where we need to be, hopefully to receive a lot of those grant match dollars and make this project a reality. Like Jason mentioned, this is such an important piece of revitalizing downtown and reinvigorating the riverfront area and just think of what the quality of life this does, not only for the people who live here, but the people we're trying to attract to come here for a lot of these new jobs that are coming our way, which is all really exciting. But this would be a great step in the right direction, in my opinion. I do have concerns about what was just presented to us because while it sounds great that Exploration Place would receive so much more additional money in the future, unless we increase our taxes, I don't see how we have this money available. And my concern with that is we have asked our other departments to stay at a flat budget for so many years. If we are now going to cut funding by $7 million to give to Exploration Place, where is that going to be cut from? I mean, this is going to be out of our general fund. So what departments would we have to ask to take a budget cut to do this? I think getting to 2.5 million today is, is a great way to help. And then if we talk about what incremental things we could do in the upcoming years to help with this project is one thing, but, and that's doable, I, in my opinion, I think, you know, obviously, those are larger conversations that we're still continuing to have. But I do worry about this. Not only is it 10 years that we'd be setting a commission up, which could outdate all of us on this commission, and I'm not comfortable putting that out there for, for so many people potentially to have to go in and change things after. But then also, what does this say to the staff that we have in the county? What does it say that we, how we value what they're doing now? And I, and again, if this was the only way, it would be a conversation to have, but I don't think it is. So I think we're all very supportive of Exploration Place. You guys all know that. I mean, last time you were here, you heard it from all of us. And I would second that motion whenever the time is ready. Thank you.
A few more comments. Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. So there's multiple options here on the table, so I want to ask a couple of questions to make sure I'm flowing correctly. First and foremost, I think it is important to note that I'm incredibly supportive of what EP is doing, grateful for what they're doing. I think it's, it's a valid reminder to share with people that the economic output after they complete EP2 will encroach almost $70 million of economic output for this community. So it's significant. I think we're obliged to support how we can. With that being said, I want to try to understand, this is, we have one option that is 23 budget. I guess both will impact the 23 budget, not what we're working on now for 24. We can do, one option on the table is 2.5 million. Finances are safe, secure. This is not an issue with 2.5 million coming out of 23's budget, and we're not taking that from other departments that would need it.
Thank you for the opportunity to answer that question, Lindsay Pogusso, your CFO. Yes, we, we certainly can handle 2.5 million as a one-time expense from your general fund this year. The source for the budget authority would actually be a contingency account. And so, no, we would not have to take from any other budget in order to fund that, and we would plan to use fund balance to support that. So it would essentially be an intentional drawdown of your fund balance, and that would not put you in a negative position. Of course, anytime you spend money, you're, you're, you're prioritizing your funds. So that would be the only thing that I would say back to that.
That's helpful. Appreciate that, Chief. We, I have another question. Why didn't we not utilize in something like this, the Economic Development Fund? I guess I'm confused. We have a fund, we have an Economic Development Fund, and whether the fund balance is appropriate or not is what we need to discuss for 2024 budget. But this is squarely an economic development investment. Why, why don't we use the Economic Development Fund? And to give us some parameters of what we envision and forecast, we're going to invest back into the community. This just seems like this would be a natural, a natural fit for that fund.
So that's a really good question. I think it's important to clarify first that we don't technically have an Economic Development Fund that is separate and apart from the general fund. It is just a program that's operated out of our county general fund. And so historically, those funds have been, but for the personnel and the incidental costs that go with the personnel that run our economic development program, the funds that go to GWP, the rest of the contractual budget that sits in economic development is really tied more to our economic development policy. And those requests that folks would come and bring in, so you've had a couple of those requests over the last six months. And so that is the source for those. In this case, because we do have a line item for Exploration Place, it is our facility, it is already baked into our budget, best practice would say that we need to fund this from the Exploration Place budget. Now, we can transfer budget from any other place. In this case, we're, we're saying, let's use contingency because we want to make sure we continue to have economic development funding available to you for the rest of the year. But it's a fair point. It's just because it's a county department, or considered a county department for purposes of the budget, we wouldn't necessarily consider it traditional economic development.
Although this is squarely economic development investment that we do, I think it's worth the conversation. Maybe we talk about it at a different staff meeting and budget, about how we use that fund and appropriately, appropriate dollars to that fund, so that we have some parameters of what we think we're going to use in a year for, for things like this. The last question, and I don't know who could answer this question, but what is the long-term plan with the, I, I don't need to restate what I believe EP's role is in this community, and that there is a public-private partnership from the county that has to take place, particularly in this. But I think so that we can have a trajectory and so that we understand where we're going five years, 10 years, 15 years, and beyond. What is the, the relationship with Sedgwick County in particular? More specifically, does EP or the board or is finance, do we believe that that $2 million that we give every year is the base? Is that a short term? Is this, I don't know conversations that have taken place in the past. Is this, do we plan on doing that every year for 10 years, 15 years, 20 years? Or as Chairman, Commissioner Dennis had mentioned, is this, was the idea to glide this down? I guess I need to understand so I can help project where we're going.
I'll offer my perspective first and then let Gail address it as well. What I can tell you is that from the similar programs and expenditure that we have in community programming, we have seen flat funding for the Extension Center, for example, number of different organizations, Wichita, Wichita Sedgwick County Historical Museum. Flat funding has been the status quo for over 10 years for all of those facilities, including Exploration Place. We know from conversations with Exploration Place, the funding that we give them is foundational for them to their operation. It allows them to be assured that throughout the course of any given year, no matter what happens economically to them, they'll be able to turn the lights on, they'll be able to pay their staff, and it supports them in their mission effort to do the things that they do in terms of science education. I don't think there have been formal discussions between the organization and the county about future funding, other than we've had this recent conversation about assisting them with this capital improvement plan. So I'm going to let Gail speak.
Thank you again for this opportunity to answer that. As of now, as he said, Tim said, we have not entered in those discussions. But if you look at the fact that we've been flat since 2016, we have taken a deduction in those years. The money that you all give us also goes to help, as he said, the lights and everything, but make this affordable for all of the citizens in this area. Currently, your donation helps us keep it at about $6, goes to each citizen for them to enter. When EP2 is done, it's going to go down to $2.22. So we haven't entered anything formally, but we haven't taken anything extra either since 2016.
That's good clarity, Gail. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. I do agree that Commissioner Beatty's on to something about using EcoDevo funds for this. I think that's where we should go with this. Just by the, by the way, they did take, EP did take a $35,000 cut in 2016. So 2015 to 16 was $35,000 reduced. I understand this is transferring to the city of Wichita on May 31st, 2047. What's the plan at that point? Do we think the city's going to take over funding for this, or what's going to happen?
We are in the process of talking about things like that with the city. It would be our hope, and I think it's everyone's hope for it to stay the way it is right now and to be able to extend a lease. EP, the building is a phenomenal building, as you all know. It's on your balance sheets, but the upkeep of it as a 20-year-old building is very expensive. We need a new roof and things like that. And as it stays as an EP property or EP-run property, we'll be able to fund those improvements.
Since I have you at the podium here, you talked about the return on the investment. We already hear from Justin, GWP, Jason or Justin?
Jason.
Jason, I'm sorry. Said the wrong name. Jason, GWP, that they see this as important to selling Wichita. On the return on investment numbers that you have right now, can you please describe that? We talked about that yesterday. Other words, Exploration Place has an impact on the community by some amount. Please talk about that.
Yes, without my papers. That's all right. It has close to, I think it is $60 million of economic impact. I sent Lindsay some information yesterday, and it breaks down not only to what the impact is, but about 28% of our visitors are coming from outside of Sedgwick County. So they're spending dollars at gas and food and some even lodging. So that really does create it. As our goal for EP2 is to have a million visitors, imagine what that impact will be from that.
So I have a couple more, I have one more question for you. Before I ask the question, I'd like to make a couple of other comments or observations here. Senate Concurrent Resolution 1611, if that were to pass, I don't know, we don't know if it's the constitutional amendment for 4% cap on assessed value growth? If that was to happen, we would be capped at 4%, which I, I'm pretty sure, looking at the last 10 years, that we would probably be held down by the cap. So we probably would hit that 4% cap over time. And I don't think the law is actually clear on what happens if you are under one year and then go over the next year. If you have any catch-up provisions in there or not, I don't know. But the, the end of the day, we potentially have a 4% cap. But what I, what I proposed today is a 2% increase. And so we will get more money. Whether we provide any additional, on my plan, I suggest, I propose here, we will get more revenue from assessed value growth if we capture that. Now, of course, there's a pressure from the state and others to, to not increase property tax levy, and I, and I certainly appreciate that. I agree that that's a great goal. Just me, I mean, remind everyone, we've increased our property taxes in the same eight years that you've not received any additional funding. We've increased property taxes by 53% revenue, gone up 53%. In fact, the zoo, zoo is counting 2024 projected budget for 2024, they have a 58% increase in funding. And CPI, if you look at CPI, we're looking at around 35% growth for CPI. I've suggested an 18% correction, which is, again, it's, it's not everything I think that probably would have happened over time. But prior to 2015, or actually, prior to 2016, I believe your numbers increased ever so slightly every year. So that what, I, I view this as more like the zoo and less like the Extension Office, Extension Center. Maybe that's not fair. I know they do great work over there. It's important to this community, but I see that Exploration Place is more like the zoo. And it's interesting to me that we seem to think of them so differently. One of the differences, of course, is our zoo has the 112 employees at the zoo are county employees. They're receiving CAPers and county health insurance and other things. The employees at EP, except for Adam, they are all your employees. We don't have anything to do with them necessarily. You use your operation fund to, you choose what, how many to hire and what to pay them. That's a, it's an EP decision. But because the employees are different between one or the other, we've had increases at the zoo, and that's fine, and I support that. But we've had no increases at EP. But in fact, they are similar in many, in many ways. And then I'll just say, let's see here. I believe that when we, I'll say this, my proposal is easier on the budget this year. Our break-even point, should the 2.5 million dollar proposed, should that motion pass today, that takes us, that, that takes about the same amount of funding that we would, on my plan, get us to 2027. It's only 2028 that my plan exceeds that 2.5 million, where you get a 2%, a 2% increase. So you get all that money upfront from now through 2027, that may be good for y'all, but I think after that, it's really not good for y'all. So here's my question. You've heard two plans this morning, Gail. Which one do you think is better for EP?
I think you just threw me into a hornet's nest.
Can I, can I say something? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Lopez.
I don't think it's appropriate to govern off the cusp like this. We have not had time, you know, Exploration Place has not had time to fully vet either of these plans. So to put you in the position to say you have to choose one or the other is wildly inappropriate, in my opinion. So I apologize for putting you in that position. Please don't feel like you need to answer that question. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Howell.
Again, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we have the $2 million proposed gift on the agenda this morning. I didn't make up the timeline here. You know, I didn't meet until yesterday, and I apologize for that, too. That wasn't my choice. This is what it is. And I hate to ask you the question the way I did, but it's imperative to know what you guys want. And I'm not trying to put you into a hornet's nest. I'm not trying to create conflict. It's just the timeline is what it is. And so if we want to have time to go back and ask your board those questions, then the only right thing to do right now is to defer this. And I, I'm supportive of either option. I personally think that the, the plan I've proposed here is better for EP over time. I honestly think that this is much better because the idea of giving one-time gifts, we give $6 million to the zoo for the entrance. Okay, that was, that was great for them, a little hard on our budget. We did that over three years. We gave 5.3 million for elephants in 2015. Great for them, great for the community, a little hard on our budget. Okay? The idea of giving these large chunks of money, you know, period, here and there, is not the way I'd like to see us do our budgets. I'd rather see us have a good operation plan and have you guys take the money out of operations. We've already provided the funding to you. Let me make a point that in 2001, prior to 2001, the zoo got 1.359 mil. And guess what? Since we went to the five-year funding agreement, since, and they've actually given up $11 million worth of funding. Thankfully, because of the $6 million appropriation and the $5.3 million appropriation, we've restored them their funding, but it took political will and a much debate to make those, those things happen. I would much rather see EP provided respectful operating budget authority, and then you guys to take care of this program, this idea on your, out of your revenue, which makes great sense, because what happens after this? I expect you'll see a 2% increase in 2024, 2034 and 2035, and you can start planning other improvements to the community. So this is a plan that provides all the fun you need. You have a commitment, I think we should have a contract, a commitment to your donors that says, we've found $7 million. It's not cash in hand, but we know where it's coming from. And they should be, feel free and to feel good about making their donations as well. But over time, this is a much better plan. If we're going to do the 2 million, 2.5 million gift, it's temporary, and then after that's over, 2028, you'll fare much worse. So you'll be back to 2.2, 2,220,140 in 2028 versus 2,892,692. And that's why this is better. I'll stop talking. I hope we can maybe, maybe defer this and get back a very thoughtful answer from EP Board. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And again, thanks to everyone from Exploration Place. I'll reiterate, we've got a couple jewels here, and this is one of them, and I do support Exploration Place. With that, I move that we approve the funding agreement, accept, increase it to 2.5 million, and authorize Chairman to sign, approve, transfer from the operating reserve to fund the agreement. Thank you.
No second.
There's been a motion in a second. Commissioner Howell.
All due respect, thank you for the motion, but I think that it's disrespectful for us to have an idea and not give the board time. As Commissioner Lopez just stated, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we would defer this for three weeks to give the board time to, to consider the idea and come back with a recommendation, and we can deal with the 2.5 at that time. Thank you.
Commissioner Beatty.
I think I would need some clarity to find out, is this, there's been a conversation that this funding... that this funding, this 2.5 is needed to secure grants. Is that affirmative? Is that? Okay, so again, I'm not going to put questions, I don't want to propose speculative questions in sort, but I, I would say that if we did that portion of it, I, there's both of these plans, I see some validity in. If we did that portion, I think we need to sit down and we need to figure out how the hell we're going to do this moving forward. I mean, if we get this done today, then we need to figure out long-term, what does this relationship look like? I don't think this is healthy to talk about where we're at five years, 10 years, 15 years. We need to, we need to sit down and have a conversation about our economic development plans, how EP fits into that, and get some things on paper, and we need to move this thing forward in a more structured manner. Because I really don't think this is helpful to the, not knowing what grants are needed, where you're going. What is important is this plan. This 2.0 plan is what's important for this community. So I, I would agree in part that we need to have a broader conversation about Sedgwick County and Exploration Place and long-term and what that looks like, so that we can secure it for this community. But there, but I'm very, I'm concerned that if we hold now, that these grant opportunities that you have, if you're saying that that is at stake, that is concerning to me, so that, those are my comments.
And as of now, there was a motion and a second for the two and a half million, and then there was a substitute motion for a delay. Commissioner Howell?
So we haven't got a second yet. Again, when I talked, when I spoke with you yesterday, and John Mosley, thank you for helping me as well, that was one of my questions. Do you think your donors would be compelled or convinced or feel good about providing their funding knowing this plan? And I think right now, we either feel good about that or we need to ask them. I don't think we have an idea that they're going to simply pull back and not provide their funding because of this different way of doing this. So again, I think some time would allow you guys to confirm your donors, to find out what they will do should this change from a $2.5 million grant to a long-term, more robust funding plan that helps EP over time. So why not take time to go and find that out? We don't know. We're assuming, as we sit here with a motion, we don't know what's going to happen if we pass this right now. And by the way, if we're going to call the question, I'm not doing that. If we're going to call the question, I'll vote for this right now. But I feel very bad for EP, because they have a great proposal on the table, and we didn't take time to figure out whether that was good for you all. I think that's a shame. And I think, and I respect, I think your board has, needs to take the time to figure out how to solve this better for you guys. Thank you, Chairman.
Is there a second for the substitute motion from Commissioner Howell? I don't see a second, so the second fails for lack of, I mean, the motion fails for lack of second, so we're back to the original motion from Commissioner Dennis, seconded by Commissioner Lopez. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay, motion carries, and we will have future discussions. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, Report of the Board on Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on July 13th, 2023.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman of Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The report of the bids of, excuse me, Board of Bids and Contracts, our regular meeting of July 13th, we have 11 items that we seek your approval. Our first item is a Bridge Improvement B502, which is the bridge on Greenwich Road between 109th and 117th Streets North for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Reese Construction Company in the amount of $591,663.51. Our second item is the Drainage Channel Improvements designated as D21 for 87th to 79th Streets South, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Pearson Construction LLC in the amount of $370,505.25. Item number three, Dry Creek Estates Street Improvements for Public Works. Recommendation is to accept the low bid from Pearson Construction LLC, and it's in the amount of $1,300,861.78. Item number four, three, excuse me, two each of the minivans for comm care, for fleet and comm care. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Parks Motors in the amount of $86,164. Item number five, the half-ton crew cab four-wheel-drive truck with a short bed for Fleet and Lake Afton Park. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Whiteside of St. Clairsville Incorporated. That's in the amount of $51,570. Item number six, 10 each of large or mid-size intermediate four-door sedans for Fleet Sheriff's Office. Recommendation is to accept the low bid from One Nation Distribution LLC, and this is in the amount of $249,800. Item number seven, Public Safety Uniforms and Web-Based Ordering System for Various Departments, and this recommendation is to utilize the Buy Board Cooperative Purchasing Contract 670-22 with Gaul's LLC, and this will establish contract rates that are, that will be good through May 31st of 2025. Item number eight, On-Call Claims Recovery and Grant Administration Services for Division of Finance. This recommendation is to utilize the Qualus Group Contract COG 2125A with Disaster Recovery Services LLC. It's for the contract rates as listed, which is good through April 30th of 2026, and it has a one-year option to renew. Item number nine, Various Hardware/Software Solutions for Division of Information Technology, and this recommendation is to utilize the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance Contract 01-97, Advanced Solutions Aggregator, and that's with Logicalis, and this is good through July 30th of 2024. Pardon me. Item number 10, Sedgwick County Transportation Comprehensive Operations and Technology Analysis and Implementation Plan for Department on Aging. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from SRF Consulting Group Incorporated. It's in the amount of $124,410.31. And the final item, item 11, is the Internet Circuit for Division of Information Technology. Recommendation is to accept the quote from Cox Business at the rate listed for a period of 60 months. I'll try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the items.
Okay, that was 11 items. That's quite a, quite a busy agenda that you've had. Okay. Any questions on any of the items? I don't see any. With that, I will make a motion to reapprove the report of the Board of Bids and Contracts from their regular meeting July 13th.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks, Joe, for all the work. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda?
Tom?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of Consent Items H through X on the general budget, or on general meeting.
Right. Commission, you've seen the consent or items H, as in Hector through X. Is there any questions or comments about any of those items? Being none, I'll make a motion to approve Consent Items H through X.
Second.
Motion and a second. No comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And at this time, public and everybody in the audience, I think it's just past 11:30. Let's take a 10-minute break, a recess for 10 minutes, and we'll start back at 11:45. Thank you.
My bladder, thanks.
I know.[1134.97]
We recessed the fire agenda now.
I think.
All right, we're getting started in 10 seconds. And 10, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four.
Okay, everybody, hey, we are live, we are live, or a few minutes late. So everybody, take your positions. Battle stations, battle stations, okay. Okay, we've, welcome back, we've returned from our, our health break recess. And we are, I'm gonna, we are going to pivot and we're gonna recess now to the fire agenda. Of Fire District One. So called a meeting to order, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Anybody from the public wanting to address on the fire agenda? Nobody had signed up, so next item, please.
New business, item A, report of the bids and contracts, regular meeting on July 13th, 2023.
Commissioners had a chance to review the, oh wait, I'm sorry, this is Joe Thomas.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I thought it was me.
You're doing a great job.
We reviewed Joe Thomas?
Yeah. Well, continue with you all, good morning, and for the record, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Department. We have one item that's part of the regular meeting of July 13th, Report of Board of Bids and Contracts. And this is for various fire apparatuses for Cedric County Fire District One. And the recommendation is to utilize the HGAC by contract FS 12-19A with Conrad fire equipment. And this is in the amount of $3,64,972.49. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I do recommend approval, please.
Okay, thanks, Joe, I think we've all been, had a little bit of a staff meeting with the chief on this item. Are there any questions for, for Joe? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you again.
Thanks, Joe. So it was 12 items that day, not just 11. Okay, next item, please.
Budget discussion.
Okay, just familiar with everybody, we've put budget discussions at the end of our meetings. And so is there any item that we want to talk about budget discussion on the fire agenda? Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Chairman, I don't really have anything to discuss, other than simply saying I have requested information that we talked about last time we got together, I've not received that yet. So I don't know what the holdup is necessarily, I know it's a lot of work, but we do need to continue our discussion, but I can't do that till we have more data.
I hear you, Commissioner. Sheena and Doug are compiling a list, we fact checking it before we give it to the commission, there were some errors found, so we're correcting that. And we're planning to staff the whole idea of fire compensation first Tuesday of August in a staff meeting, so we can talk in depth about it, because there's gonna be visual display and some charts and comparatives we'll have to do. But we will get the information to the commission in advance of that date.
I am, regarding the Evergreen Study in the Fire District, I guess I'd like to talk to someone about, one of my, one of my questions is very basic, the step plan that we have adopted, it is a plan that's based on time in service and time in rank. It's very basic, it doesn't require anything else, and so the Evergreen Study, what is it taking into account, besides just time in service, time in rank?
I mean, it takes all of those into, kind of might have Sheena come to the podium, takes all that into account, but to a percentage factor on time in total service, I think I'll let Sheena answer that question, she can drill down a little bit on that.
Good morning, Commissioner, Sheena Schmucks, Chief Human Resources Officer. The Evergreen Study takes into account 100% of time in service and 50% of time at the organization, or their tenure.
So 50% of the time that they're in the, in the Fire District, and 100% of the time they work with Cedric County, what are you saying, you're saying Cedric County specifically, or?
Cedric County, yes, within the organization, and 100% of time that they are in their classification, their current classification.
So the 50%, that's, that is, that's new to me, so I guess if they're a firefighter, for example, say they're here for five years, there would be step five, and if they're still a firefighter, they're on that row that designates firefighter, that determines their salary. If they are here two years as a paramedic and they move over to fire, is that what you're saying?
We would still consider that time with the organization.
So that would be seven years in that case. But you wouldn't, you wouldn't use, you wouldn't use seven, you'd use two first county, that'd be 100% of the county time, and only half the time with the, with the Fire District?
No, it's only half their time in any position other than the position they're currently in. It's the same methodology we used for the general pay plan.
All right, I think that's, okay, now I understand a little bit, I don't know that we, I'll concede, I have some concerns, but I will talk to you more about this later, thank you again, thank you Chairman, or thank you Chairman.
Okay, any other questions about the budget, on the fire budget? Okay, without any, next item, please.
Other.
I'll just make a quick comment, other, it's kind of late in the day yesterday, was talking to Chief and Rusty, because we had the first meeting, the first gathering of the, of the Advisory Council of the Fire. And they thought, and we agreed that it'd be nice if I just said a couple of opening comments, basically welcoming them, telling them that we appointed this, and encouraged them that, like others advisory boards, that to be independently compelled to make their own recommendations to us. And it was about a three-minute introduction, and so, and then, then I departed and they had their meeting, and I understand it was a pretty successful meeting. They got a lot of questions, the, I'm really was pleased hearing their introductions about themselves and who they are or what their background is. I, I think it's a really strong advisory council that we've put together, and very, very good. So just wanted to report that back to the commission, and I don't plan to be at any other meetings. Again, just like other commission or other council meeting, other advisory board meetings, sometimes when a commissioner's there or city council member's there, it may have an impact, but but I also told them if they had any questions that they wanted to ask specific to a commissioner, that they're more than welcome to, to call or contact them. But again, to remain their own, their own committee to, to help advise us on this, so just wanted to share that under other.
Chairman. If I could interrupt, while we're, before we leave our agenda, we had a series of budget questions asked a couple of weeks ago by commission, and we were gonna try to report out on both those. Justin has one that is pertaining to fire that Commissioner Lopez asked concerning union membership, so if we could give Justin just a second to talk about that.
Okay, Justin.
Thank you, Chairman, Justin Wagoner, County Counselor. During last, as the county manager mentioned, during the last county commission meeting, Commissioner Lopez asked about the process if the Board of County Commissioners, sitting as the fire, as the governing body for Fire District Number One, would wish to enter into a contract with the union, what would that look like? I think, and in particular, I believe Commissioner Lopez brought it up in the context of negotiations, you know, whether the union's recognized, not recognized. So I'm gonna do my best to distill an act, it's called PERA, that I'll talk about into about a five-minute or so presentation here, then go through step by step what that would look like, there's really just the statute, there's a lot of other legal analysis that I don't really intend to get into, or not get into right now. But I will say that, you know, at a surface level review, PERA, and that's P-E-E-R-A, which is the acronym for the Kansas Public Employer Employee Relations Act, is the framework within which the Fire District formerly had a union agreement. It's one of the more common ways that municipalities and taxing subdivisions in Kansas can elect to subject themselves to collective bargaining with organized units of government employees. To the best of my knowledge, and based on looking at the Kansas Department of Labor website, I don't believe there are any fire districts in, in the state of Kansas that are currently organized under PERA. They, I will say that Kansas Department of Labor's website, look, appears to be out of date, because it does list Cedric County Fire District on there as being a Fire District subject to PERA, but as of 2018, a vote, based on a vote in 2016 effective January 1st of 2018, our Fire District withdrew from PERA. The PERA includes rules of conduct and also prohibited practices for both employers and employees during labor negotiations, and also policies. There are, for example, employees would not be able to strike during any, any agreement under PERA. By the same token, employers are not able to institute a lockout. Also, the employer and the union have ongoing duties to meet and confer in good faith with the, with each other, which, whether it's negotiating on a contract, whether it's dealing with an employee grievance, those types of things, that standard is really always there on both parties. There's others, I won't get into all of those right now, we could talk about those in more detail in the future, if you'd like me to, or if you want me to get into it today, I'd be happy to list out the others. Also, the PERA includes a dispute and impasse resolution procedure, really allows the parties to reach agreements on what that will look like. And also, if there's a grievance, or somebody believes the other party's not dealing in good faith, they can raise objections and have those heard. And to that point, PERA also establishes PERB, which is the Public Employees Relations Board, which is tasked with administering PERA. The PERB consists of five members, they're all appointed by the governor and confirmed by the Kansas Senate. There's a requirement by statute that not more than three of them can be from a single political party. They handle unfair labor practice complaints, whether from an employer or an employee group. They make binding decisions that are final unless one of the parties would choose to appeal their decision up, essentially through an administrative process and potentially even to a court eventually. So they have a role in resolving disputes and impasses between employers and unions, that's a really an oversimplification, but there's a number of things they can do there. So what would the steps be like to get to this agreement that Commissioner Lopez had asked about? First, the Board of County Commissioners, by a simple majority vote, three out of five of you would have to vote to make the Fire District and Fire District employees part of an employee group subject to PERA. It's an entirely discretionary decision, there's, you can't be forced into entering into PERA, that's your decision, and solely your decision if you choose to do it. Next, the Cedric County Fire District employees who would be part of the public employee group, which wouldn't necessarily include every single Fire District employee, that would probably include the bulk of them, would then have a, a vote to select what entity, perhaps a union or an individual, could be an individual or other organization would represent them in negotiations. The, from there, the Fire District and union representatives, so you would have, you would authorize somebody to act on your behalf as a negotiation representative, as would the, I'm calling it a union, again, it could be some other organization, would, would enter into negotiations for a memorandum of agreement. The scope of this memorandum of agreement can be very broad, generally speaking, it could include all matters relating to conditions of employment of the Fire District employees. Again, that would have to be negotiated in good faith, the scope of that agreement between both of the parties. The maximum term of that MOA, a memorandum of agreement, would be for three years. Both the Fire District and the union, again, would have a duty to confer in good faith. That MOA could include a grievance procedure and a mechanism for the arbitration of disputes that may arise in terms of interpretations of the MOA, which is a lot of what, you know, the, a lot of the disputes that could come up would deal with specific terms of the memorandum agreement, how it applies to specific situations. After that agreement would be reached by representatives of the Fire District and the union, they would jointly prepare a memorandum of understanding, apparently this act likes the word memorandum a lot, and present that to you, the Board of County Commissioners, sitting as the governing body for the Fire District. The Board of County Commissioners, after receiving that report, they would receive a report from the CFO, from your Chief Financial Officer, Lindsay Poe Rousseau, regarding the fiscal effect of the MOU on the agency, so in this case it would be on the Fire District. And then you would be tasked with considering the MOU and taking appropriate action. The statute doesn't necessarily spell out what that is, but if, if you would approve the MOU, a resolution would be passed to indicate that if you would reject the proposed MOU, the matter would be returned to your negotiating parties for further deliberation, referred to as meet and confer proceedings, which are extended negotiation processes that may include even a mediator and a fact-finding board to decide to resolve any, any remaining disputes on the MOU or MOA. Ultimately, after this negotiation is concluded, again, the Board of County Commissioners, after a hearing, would be tasked with taking such action as it deems to be in the public interest, including the interest of the public employees involved. What that means is ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners has the end authority, when you're under PERA, on whether to enter into this agreement. Again, there would be a continued duty of negotiating in good faith, but there, there is an ability, if you would choose at that point not to do it, I believe there is an ability not to follow through with entering into that contract, but you would be subject to potential legal challenge or claims being brought up to PERB on whether that, whether the, the Fire District had engaged in good faith, and you could likewise make similar claims with regard to any union. Out of that, I mean, I think part of what Commissioner Lopez asked about is, is if that's a way, I think you kind of referred to it as a quasi-recognition of the union as it stands now, because there is a union, but they're not contractually recognized, the county is not, or the Fire District is not under PERA. I think that is a way that you could formalize or establish negotiation parameters, I also don't think it's the sole way that that could be concluded. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I, I realize that was probably more detailed than you wanted, so.
Well, it's, it's a lot, but none of us assume that, that a union question would be a simple, a simple answer. So bottom line is, it'd be a commission-driven decision.
I think, yeah, whether to get into it, I think if three or more of you would want to do it, that's, it can happen, and, and there's a lot of steps to go through. I, I realize we're talking about this in the context of the 2024 budget, at least the timing, there's, I, I don't really think it's feasible or realistic that this, and I'm not saying anyone was saying it was, but for this to be done in time for anything in 2024, I think if it was, if the will of the board was to do it, I think it would have to work through a much more robust process than that.
Okay, and Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, thank you so much for all of that information, and, and no, I don't think that it would be possible, if there's a will of the Board of Three, to do that for this coming budget year. I don't see how anything like that would be feasible, but I do appreciate all of this, I might have some questions after I go back and listen to that a couple more times. I know that I have a meeting, and I believe Commissioner Beatty will join in next, in two, in next week, in a couple of weeks, with the Fire Union Leadership now, so we can see if they have any questions, that we'd be able to kind of talk about that together. I know that they have their own legal representation, so I wouldn't want to ask you anything necessarily, but I do think that we can hopefully figure something out, and if we have any questions on what that would be from our end, I'll let you know, but I do appreciate all of this information, it's a lot to comb through, which obviously is going to be with unions, but I do appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Justin, any other questions, comments? Okay, don't think so, next item?
Executive session.
Okay, we do not have an executive session, so we will, unless there's any other business on the Fire District One, we will adjourn the Fire District One and return back to the Cedric County Commission Meeting. Next item, please.
Budget discussion.
Okay, now we are at the budget discussion for, as we promised, I think Tom has a few things he wants to share with us.
Chairman, if I could jump in here, the commission at our last meeting asked a, a series of questions, and we'd like to kind of come back to those questions. Let me just cover them very quickly and then we'll go, there was a question regarding, from Commissioner Howe, on the $100,000 website redesign, so Nicole's going to do a, just a quick addressment of that and take on any questions. The election office mailer was questioned, so our election commissioner is here this morning to deal with those questions, and then there were some questions on loft and task force expenditures, which Rusty will report out on. Force expenditures, which Rusty will report out on, and then there was a question on whether we would have the ability to, of the position additions recommended in the 2024 budget, if we can implement those in fiscal '23, and Sheena will address those questions. Our two fire questions, we've already talked about, so we, these are the four that we'll focus on here, so if it's okay, I'd like to have Nicole come to the podium and talk about the website redesign questions.
Okay, that, thank you, Tom, I like how this is playing out so far, we had some questions and now we're addressing here a week later. All right, Nicole?
Hello again, Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. To give you a little history on our website, in 2020, there was a budget approved for $60,000 to do a website refresh. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic hitting that same year and some department turnover, this was never completed. And also, our departments continue to move towards digital services and offering services all the time with more accessibility 24/7. Some of the reasons that we need this is it's the county's largest communication tool. In 2022 alone, the website had over 9.2 million page views, the traffic grows more and more each year. The current design has been in place since 2013, and best practices stay to review and refresh it every three to five years, and we are past that. With a refresh, it will give us the opportunity to evaluate the current content on our site and create processes to declutter and best organize information for easy public access. On top of that, the website is also one of our main recruitment tools for potential new employees. Many explore our site and learn what we are about. With this being their first touchpoint, it's vital that we have our best foot forward. Some additional viewpoints is the visual appeal, when people visit a website, they see it as a reflection of the organization. If it looks professional, is loaded with useful information, we're seen as an authority and an expert. Likewise, if the site looks out of date, they'll make the same assumptions, unfortunately. Currently, any modern website design, widgets and forms we want to include have to be created and hardcoded by our IT staff. This takes time and resources away from other issues. IT is able to provide site updates, but these updates are few and far between due to their workload capacity. We have unified our branding on social platforms and its contingent, or in its content, and have significantly improved our reach and engagement with the community. We're ready to do this with our website, and it, as it stands, it does not reflect our brand, and we need to continue pushing forward to unify that. Some notes on our content, our current website has transitioned from a useful information page or site to a public database. As of yesterday, July 18th, we have 6,847 pages that are accessible to the public. 1,314 of those are actual content, and that's the information you would go on and read. 3881 of the pages have not been updated since 2020. Of that 3,881, 231 of those are content pages, so we have a significant number of content pages that have not been updated. A site redesign allows us to readdress how we communicate with our visitors and to write simple copy that target, that's targeted and more effective. In the modern go faster and faster world, we only have two to four seconds to engage new visitors. Another note on functionality, websites designed over four years ago are typically behind in terms of looks and functionality, they typically contain outdated code that slow down loading speed or the way it responds on different devices, it may also not be compatible with latest browsers. While our website is mobile responsive, it's not always mobile friendly. Over 50% of website traffic comes from portable devices. Our website is basically Cedric County's digital storefront. Given how much time and resources we invest in our services, effective communication with our constituents, not updating our storefront becomes deferred maintenance and is ineffective for the people we serve. I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, well, thanks Nicole for that comprehensive kind of summary, I know you and I talked about this a little bit, and my, my first thought is our website's okay, kind of, but then you explained a lot of what you just discussed, and I think one thing that hit me was some of this stuff has to be hardcore, hard?
Coded.
Coded.
Yes.
Hard, hardcoded by IT, which is a further demand, problematic for, for all departments, so.
I do want to reiterate, sir, that we have a great partnership with IT, and we have exceptional support from them, but they are pulled in many directions, and being able to explore other options for the website is an ability to potentially relieve them of some of those duties and allow us to be more hands-on and keep moving forward.
Okay, thank you. There's a few comment, questions or comments? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Well, I, I think this is past time, then it needs to be done, I mean, it really is, our, our website's the face of the county in so many ways, but I do have a question, is this going to include any kind of interpretation of other languages within the website, more than just Google Translate?
That's a great question, ma'am, that is my desire, that when we pursue an updated website, that we explore the opportunities to have multiple languages and how that could be translated, that would be part of the, what I would perceive part of the RFP process.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Thanks, ma'am.
Any others? Okay, thank you, you, IT's kind of your background too, right? Okay, thank you, well, we lean, lean on you for your comments, for sure. Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, again, I, I have no doubt that everyone's made requests to our budget that's not going to get what they want, and they're going to have a defense of why they want what they want, they all have great ideas, but I just think we need to understand from the, from the taxpayer's perspective, do they feel like this is worth $100,000 to, to change this? I don't, we can just agree to disagree, I, I think we have to find places to trim our budget, this is a great place to trim a budget, because I go to the website, I can't tell you how many times a day I'm in that website looking up information, and I think it does its job, I don't think it's intended to be something that, I guess, impresses people with their graphics or whatever it is, I, I think it's a place to get information primarily, I think it does its job pretty well. So I don't know that I support the $100,000 for this, I think that we need to find places to trim, and I have other ideas, but this is just a starting point, so if I bring up other ideas and places to trim, if I'm going to go through the, the process of arguing exactly why I think we need to trim every little thing I come up with, we're going to, I don't know if we have enough time in the process to do that, but, anyway, thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
The next item, I think, where there was some discussion on the Election Office specifically or surrounding the mailers, and so the Commissioner, I think there was other questions about the Election Office too, so the Election Commissioner is here today, and I, if there's questions or if she wanted to comment on her mailers.
Morning, election commissioners.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Election Commissioner, how's the election going? You can give us.
It's going, early voting is underway, it's slow, so let's spread the word to come down to the Election Office and vote, saw Commissioner Dennis down there, the first day of early voting, so thank you. I had to cut out of the meeting last week early because we had election work and training that I had to get to, so I'm not really aware, I know there were some questions surrounding the mailer, and black and white versus color, cost of the mailer, I'm happy to answer any questions when it comes to those.
Commissioner Howell, or no?
Yes.
Well, if we had, some of us had, I think it was Commissioner Howell that had some questions.
I don't know, did you watch the meeting and listen to the discussion?
Yes.
So you know what was said? Okay, I'm just questioning, number one, again, it looks to me like adding poll sites is pretty, pretty, it doesn't require a lot of money to add poll sites.
Right.
We're distributing the same equipment to more places.
Correct.
The issue of spending $120,000 for an application, mail that to every voter, I just, for one, I think it's a lot of money, and I don't know that we, again, we're the, I believe we're the only county in the state of Kansas that does this, it's not required by law, it's something we've tuck ourselves into doing because we have less poll sites. So the issue is, we don't have, we don't have enough poll sites, and so I'm just saying for $120,000, we could, we could restore more poll sites, I think it's a better way to go, so more convenience for voters to go to a, a poll site that's closer to where they live. I don't think the vote anywhere law is ever going to be implemented, so I, I've given up on that entirely, but I do think that, you know, having more poll sites, like other counties, you know, Johnson County has like over 200 poll sites, correct?
Correct.
Every, every county, even a small county like, they say small, Shawnee County is, is not a lot of people, but they have more poll sites than we do. So again, I, I think the, the real problem here is not, is lack of poll sites, so we need to address that, and there is a proposal here for 15 poll sites, and I agree with that, that's $18,000 in change, I think that's very well, that's a great idea, I support that wholeheartedly, but we're still supporting the, the bad idea of sending out these applications because we don't have enough poll sites. And so I questioned the dollars, I did contact a mailhouse just to see what they would charge, and it's roughly almost a fourth of the cost.
Without postage?
With postage.
No, it was without, read the fine print, it did not include postage in those two invoices, I have a copy of those. Third sentence of the fine print says, "If no postage is shown on postage, has not been included in the quote," so those quotes you have do not include postage.
I'll ask them to add postage to that, but.
Okay.
My experience is, they are, they are very competitive, and I think the prices here are just higher than they should be, but.
Well, and you also got black and white, ours are color.
And why is that?
Color is more, it draws attraction, I mean, you don't do campaign signs in black and white for that same reason we don't do mailers. I'm not an expert when it comes to marketing, but I think the use of color in direct mail campaign and any other campaign, there's plenty of studies out there that will tell you that use of color is wise.
Okay, well, I'll just say once again, we ought to try to be, you know, fiscally conservative.
Absolutely.
And spend money, we don't need to spend so, if we're going to send out something, though I think the postcard is the way to go, and it should be black and white, it should be one for household, it has a voter in it, and that's the least cost to get the information out to the people that there's an election going on, and here's your chance to vote, and if you want to mail a ballot application, here's how you do that. So to me, that's reasonable information, I would probably support that, as long as it was done competitively and we had a, a good deal, I'm not sure that the estimate is, is where I think we should be with that, so I'd, I'd like to see some, some work to bring that number down a little bit. Again, this is just one of many things in the budget, so as I get started talking about things we support or don't support in the budget, we're going to have a very long discussion, because this is, this is a small amount of money relevant to a $560 million budget, so if we could save $30,000 by having a lower-cost printer, then, then we should do that, but we need to find ways to trim our budget where we can, so, yeah, we might agree to disagree, I would really like to see us put more effort into increasing more poll sites, that's where we, that is the better answer, and over time, that's where we need to go.
Our initial decision package was to add 30 polling sites, and it was kind of a compromise we reached, doing, adding 15 polling sites and doing the advanced by mail ballot application versus doing 30 polling sites and just doing a postcard mailer, so it was kind of a trade-off, which one, I totally agree, we need more than 15, we need at least 30, but we also need the advanced by mail ballot application, we hear over and over how much that does, we've, I think we've processed, are we up to 12,000, over 12,000 now? I believe, I couldn't, I can get you that number, how many ballots we have mailed out. So it does make an impact, and it does help reduce lines on Election Day.
And then another thing I have to bring up, I don't know if we've ever, ever had a discussion here, but let me just point out that Shawnee County is a great example of how to do elections a little bit differently, they, they primarily use what I call hand-completed paper ballots, they have a single express vote machine for ADA purposes, but the majority of voters are, they are, they're using the paper ballots, where they complete the paper ballot.
Sure.
The tabulators can handle a lot of ballots, that's, that's not the holdup at the election, at the poll site, it's, it is, the express vote machines is, is the number one problem, especially on a complicated ballot, like a 2024 presidential, again, today you're talking about 30 seconds for a very simple ballot, but we're talking about in a presidential election, it could be five, six, seven minutes for someone to get through several, quite a few pages of selections, and so it slows it way down when the ballots long, so the presidential is, is an example of where we have a very long line, because the express vote machines are just, it's a bottleneck, if you will, and so using a paper ballots, it is a way to reduce lines, in fact, there should be never, there should be no lines at all, you put the, you put the effort towards the check-in to get the bottleneck down there, tabulators can handle it no problem, the problem is the express vote machines, and so having more poll sites and having a, steering people towards using paper ballots is a way to keep those, those lines down to very small, and I think we ought to have that discussion, this is probably not the right time for that.
Okay, Laura, thank you for explanation and being here and being available, so any other questions? But thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck with this election, we only have, how many more days, 14, something like that?
Yeah, it's August 1st, satellite locations open up Thursday, the 27th, and they'll be open the 27th, 28th, 29th, but early voting's taking place down at the historic courthouse now, eight to five.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, Tom?
And plus, you'll come down and report on the Lofton Task Force expenditures for Commissioners.
Right, okay. Your afternoon.
Morning, Commissioners, Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. Last meeting, Commissioner Lopez had asked about an update on expenditures for the, related to the recommendations from the community task force. We did this last year during budget season, and I think on June 10th of 2022, and we had some tentative numbers, we included Mental Health Coalition recommendations and some numbers associated with them, so we pulled that data. This is a very close representation, this is not exact, we will continue to update, Finance had a hand in this, and then some of this was extracting data from departments, but this, I, I don't know, necessarily know that you want me to go through line by line, some of these are direct costs associated with actions that were taken specifically because of the recommendations, some of these align with recommendations were made, and things have been, actions have been taken by the Commission and by departments that align and support the recommendations, and so we went ahead and included those on here just like we did last year. And just, just a couple of them, at the very top, Emergency Communications, and Tim's here if there are additional, additional questions on com care issues, but the first one, the 736 is specifically personnel costs, it's grant funding for com care, and that allows them to expand their mobile crisis unit response to a 24-hour operation with eight teams. The second one is the allocation or the award from the City of Wichita to com care that allows them to hire four teams that will be mobile response associated with and in conjunction with Wichita PD. The third one is com care grant dollars that support a position that will be embedded in 911, and actually, they have an intent to embed a second, the first one has been hired and is online and is ready to move into the call center whenever it's completed in August, and com care has a second body that they will put in there to enhance the number of hours they cover with that. And then as you go down into Corrections, there are numbers there that relate to mental health in JIAC and in JDF, actions they've taken related to doing training for their staff that was recommended, and then there's also work that they've done with, related to work with Kansas Department of Corrections on the crossover youth program on the second page, and work that they've done on IJP with WSU, they're nearing the end of that study and the work on that, where they will start working on MOUs with stakeholders to expand the independent justice, or justice plan capabilities across the county, so ultimately, with what we're able to calculate thus far since basically April 25th of 2022, when the task force finished their work through present, is somewhere around $3.7 million that have been spent, different funding sources, some general fund, county general fund, some city funding, and grants from the state, federal government that have come into Corrections and com care. So that's kind of a accounting of dollars that have been spent that either were directly related to actions on the part of departments because of the recommendations or things that have been done by the county that support those recommendations, largely in mental health and those types of things, so if that's helpful. I will stand for questions if you have any, or.
Yeah, this is.
If Tim's in the room.
Okay. Rusty, this is a very helpful document, if, not to create a lot of work, but I did see, you know, you, you mentioned, and I see some are grant-supported, some are the city of Wichita costs, some are directed to the county, maybe another column that said what is, you know, federal money, state money, Cedric County expense, might be helpful, or maybe a summary at the bottom of the 3.7 million was.
Yeah, we can, we can drill down and make those changes as we update it again, and.
I think, because 3.7 sounds like pretty good chunk, but.
And to be clear, some, some of these, some of these are allocated, or they've been allocated but not spent, some of them are encumbered, they're in the process of being spent, and then some of them are actually dollars that have been expended, so it's a combination of funding sources and what stage we're in with getting those dollars spent, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay. There's. Yeah, okay. There's a couple of questions you're going to have here. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Well, that was going to be my main ask was just if I could see how much of that was county spending. But I love to see kind of just broken out a little bit even further. So thank you for doing this. This is really helpful just to be able to see it and have a better understanding of everything that's happened. So I really appreciate this document. Thank you.
I'll work with finance and the departments and we'll refine that a little bit and bring it back to you in a couple, three weeks with, or send it to you. We can just send it to you if you'd like and have a little more detail on funding sources, et cetera.
Okay. And Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. There was, in the recommended budget, there was a contingency broadly labeled mental health contingency. Was that a byproduct of the task force or is that something that is separate? I thought that was a byproduct of a recommendation of the task force, but I don't see it on here.
I think it was a combination, but CFO, do you wish to?
I think, I think where Rusty was headed was correct. I think it was a combination of just giving the commission the ability through a contingency to deal with whatever came up as a result of this task force operation. And we have, it's in the recommended budget for 2024, 1 million. Same logic that gives the commission latitude. If they see something that they want, a program, a position, something that they want to move forward with. You don't have to. It's contingent. So you don't have to spend it, but it's there if you need it.
Okay. I just wanted to see the connect. Appreciate it. Thanks, Rusty.
Good, good question. So all of these numbers that are county related are already built into our existing budget and our forecast. And I'm getting a positive nod. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No. Thank you, Rusty. Very good, good work. Thank you for staff and everybody. Next, Tom.
And then last is Sheena, and she'll address Commissioner Dennis's question on what we can do with staffing if the commission approves the budget as is.
So the question was asked if we could implement new positions that were approved in the 2024 budget in 2023. And the answer is yes. We've done that before. We have a process that we go through. We make sure that the manager approves and we have funding available in finance and we're able to do that.
Good. Commissioner Dennis?
Oh, thank you. Well, Sheena, I appreciate it and I appreciate the answer specifically. So what I would ask is the staff to go back and take a look at it and see if we ought to put it on an agenda item because we can't prove it today and see if we, if the commission would go along with that idea because it's going to have to go onto an agenda item.
Yeah, the, my recollection is the staffing, a couple of them were elections related or appraisal related. And I don't know what immediate needs.
Yeah. So as long as they were approved in the budget, in the 2024 budget, we would just need Tom to approve that. And finance has already assured me that the funds are there, so in 2023.
It does, it does not need approval by us? It's process?
Only the budget.
Okay.
But I guess the way I'd like to handle it is if you, you'll approve the budget on August 23rd. And if you want an agenda item, I think it's important enough that the commission ought to hear it publicly. We can put an agenda item on that, this later in the 23rd budget. You could do it that same day or the next meeting after we bring it back and have you approve it. I would prefer it that way.
And what did you say the total cost would be if we started, if we approved it?
We'd have to, we'd want to do some calculations on that to determine if you want to implement it right away. We'll cost that out for you on what that's going to be.
Well, the way I was looking at it, I don't know that the cost would be that much in 2023 because if, say we approve it on the agenda or the budget adoption day, then you've still got to advertise it. You've got to go through the whole process. So we probably wouldn't be hiring them until the end of 2023 anyway. So.
Lorian has provided some information. If we did the, after a budget adoption, it's a little over 300,000. And if we waited further into the fourth quarter, it's a little over 200.
So really, we're going to look at a very small part. But if we wait until we use the 2024 budget, we can't start the process until January. So this just kind of speeds it up a short period of time, but I think it's worth exploring. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheena. So Tom, we covered the four items that were discussed previously, so.
That's all we had, Chairman.
Okay. Is there, so might be some other questions going forward? Commissioner How?
Thank you. Chairman, I'd like to raise a couple more things to talk about. One of those is the Mental Health Coalition and Mental Health Substance Abuse Coalition. I see $33,000 in this budget for that. I thought the plan was three years of that. Are we not past the third year?
I think the, you're talking about the 33,000. I think we're, this is the second year.
The second year. Okay. All right. Thank you so much for that. On the, there's a, there's a $34 million set out aside for contingency this year on page 173. I'd like to talk about that a little bit. That seems like a pretty big number. Can we discuss why is that up so high? 2023 was 25 million revised. Originally it was 30 million, but now we're 34 million.
Lindsay will get that, Commissioner. There's logic to all of that literature.
Okay.
I can discuss now if that's okay? So again, for the record, Lindsay Purso, your CFO. So for the contingency reserves, you're right, it is a higher number than it has been in the past. And there's several reasons actually that are driving that. So first of all, if you recall, in 2020, we depleted 100% of our contingency reserves. And we had to eat into economic development and some other areas of the budget that had excess budget authority in order to pay for those things. So I had thought up until that point, there was no realistic scenario where that could happen, and I was wrong. So we want to learn from that. We also have consolidated three independent funds into the general fund, EMS, noxious weeds and com care tax fund. So that has increased our overall amount of budget authority. So, but then there are specific reasons for the increases for each of these. So the operating reserve went from 10 million to 12 million. Again, that is strictly a function of bringing in other funds, inflation. Some of the other things that we've seen where, because the operating reserve is the most flexible of the contingencies, we wanted to have the most budget authority there. The BOCC contingency was brought up to $300,000, which was kind of a historic level just to make it a nice round number from 285,000. Public safety contingency, if you'll recall, so this is 2.4 million in the recommended, it's at five. That is largely because if you recall, the sheriff had a decision package to request an additional $2.6 million for out of county housing. Instead of putting that in the sheriff's budget because there were so many indicators that seemed to tell the story that perhaps that would not actually be necessary. We put that in contingency so that it can be made available if necessary, but otherwise is not built into the base budget going forward. The rainy day reserve of 10 million has stayed flat. The technology contingency went from 1 million to 1.5 million. There are numerous factors that drove that. We've heard concerns about Odyssey. We know that we continue to talk about a finance system implementation. We know the technology is getting increasingly expensive. So honestly, one to 1.5 million, I thought was, was pretty modest. But again, we have a $12 million operating reserve. The mental health contingency has remained in at 1 million. And then finally, there's an employee compensation contingency. In 2023, that figure was adopted at $5.3 million across all funds. That was because we had a 3% compensation contingency. Next year, we are planning to include a 2.5% contingency. So across all funds, instead of the 5.4 figure, it's about 4.9 million. So there is actually a little bit of an offset to the other increases through that. So those are all of the contingencies that at least live in the contingency reserves. We do have a couple others. Fleet management has its own contingency because it's a certified fund. Once you adopt it, we can't adjust it without going through the entire budget amendment process. So there's a couple of others like that sprinkled throughout the book, but this is the bulk of the contingency reserves. And of course, the fire district also has its own reserve, but that's, that's not a part of the county discussion.
Okay. That's a lot of information. I'll have to go back and listen to this again, make sure I can get all that written, all that down. If you don't, if you have time, could you compile that into a, to a note? That'd be awesome.
Yes, that would be very easy.
It's very, it's complicated more than I thought it would be. Apologies for that. My next question, I guess, would be regarding Northwest Expressway. I know we're earmarking another million dollars again, again. I don't know how many years we've done this, but I'm beginning to lose faith in it and I've, I've lost interest in it. I know that there's a match from the state, but what good does it do if we're never going to get there? So I would like to see us reconsider the Northwest Expressway million dollar funding. If we're going to continue that, then I'd like to make an amendment to, to take 200,000 of that to support Arc 95 instead of the Northwest Expressway. I'd like to create, if you will, a, an account that we would work with Hayesville and Mulvane and Derby. We would collect their revenues that they're dedicating towards rights of way, you know, purchasing rights of way. And then we would essentially become the lead on that and we would dedicate our money to a fund that would be sitting there for purchasing rights, purchasing rights of way for the 95 project. So, so either 200,000, if we're going to, if we're going to maintain this, I'd like to see that amendment made. I don't think the District 5 has much of an interest in Northwest Expressway. I do think that regionally, I like to support regional projects, but this is one I don't think we're ever going to see in my grandkids' lifetime. So I'd like to reconsider what we're doing here. Thank you.
For the record, Lynn Packer, your deputy director, or your director of public works and county engineer. I will just remind the commission that our contract, our current contract with KDOT allows for our contribution to be up to a million dollars. And KDOT will match up to a million dollars. I should say, we can contribute whatever, I mean, anything over a million dollars, but our match will be to a million. If we decide to cut it down to 800,000, they will also cut their contribution down to 800,000 dollars. In addition to that, Arc 95 is receiving funds from local cities around the area. Derby, Hayesville, Mulvane are all contributing funds. However, they are not turning those funds over to us to hold at this time. And I do believe we can, if the desire is with the BOCC, we can move forward to try to enter into an agreement that would allow for those funds to be turned over to the county for, for use. We do need to sit down with our partners to formalize that, see if that is a desire and a direction they want to go. And to also work with planning on doing a protective overlay. Those would be the next steps we are working on for Arc 95.
So let me comment. So the protective overlay needs to happen pretty soon. I mean, honestly, this, this is a problem by not having that done already. That's, that's not expensive necessarily other than legal, you know, planning creation. There's not a lot of cost to, to developing that right of way, I'm sorry, that overlay. I have, I have spoken to some of the entities involved that are earmarking money for public rights of way. And I think they're looking for someone to lead. Again, I, I don't know that we should give less than they're giving. Right now we are. We're giving zero and they're giving something. So I think we can do better than that. I think this is actually more mature project, the Northwest Expressway. Northwest Expressway right now is purchased in rights of way. That's true. But they don't really, as far as I know, we're, we're applying for that grant that would provide, if you will, move this project to a shovel ready project. And I don't know the status of that, but I know we're trying. So again, once we, once we get the shovel ready, this is a lot less expensive to complete this project. The first stage of this project would be a lot less, a lot less expensive to do that versus Northwest Expressway, which I, I don't know what the, I couldn't even tell you what the first number of that and how many zeros. It's a very, very expensive project. So the idea that we would see any fruit from the 800,000 or a million dollars, even if the KDOT was to match that, as far as I can tell, there's not a lot of will from the state, from KDOT to do this. We're not really moving forward. And unfortunately, I think one of the most significant parts of this is that Wichita is not supportive of it. We talked about, don't call this a bypass because that, that's a negative term. Call it an expressway. Thinking that, you know, it would, it would develop much like the K96 Northeast Expressway has developed. But Wichita should be supportive of that, but unfortunately they're not. And so in lack of their support, I don't know that WAMPO is ever going to seriously be the driver of this. I think the county needs to get behind this and make this our project and we should drive, ask for support wherever we can. Then move this to shovel ready and start putting money towards, significant money towards rights of way as a, as a significant step in getting this project moving forward. So I have supported Northwest Expressway all the years I've been here. We've put a ton of money into that. And I just don't think it's going to happen, at least not again in my grandkids' lifetime. So I'd like to see us reconsider those funds. Thank you.
I will also remind the commission, we do have local consult with KDOT this fall. That's where we talk about projects like this and funding for those projects and prioritization. I agree with you. If we do not, are not able to get Wichita back on board, that is going to, I don't, I'm not going to say it's going to remove the project, but it is definitely going to hamper getting support, full support from legislature and from KDOT. And they're, they're looking for, for that to come back. And we need to reengage in those conversations with the city. The, but I do think, of course, we can pursue however you want to split that funding up. However, the board wants to do, we will work with you to do that. But local consult will give us, this fall will give us a good insight into where the KDOT falls with that. And also it'll be a great introduction with the city because the city should be there with also gauging their current interest in Northwest Bypass.
The Wichita Cedric County Transportation Coalition, I don't know if they've actually seriously considered the Northwest Expressway. Maybe they have, but again, there's representatives from Wichita on that. So until there's support from Wichita, I find this to be very difficult to, to move this project forward. North, the North Junction, when we worked together on that, it moved to the front of the, front of the line and it got the attention it needed. I'll just remind folks, if you look at the Cedric County map, you'll notice that there's primarily two ways to go from southeast Cedric County into the city. And both of those, I think, are hitting natural limits. We need to find some relief. And so we have a problem and the county needs to lead on this. And so without some type of project that's actually moving forward, I mean, Northwest Expressway is about development. And it would be, it's a road that right now that no one, no one depends on. There's no problem to be solved. It's just a, it's a great path to get development to happen. The K15 corridor is a problem and we don't have an answer. So that's why this needs to move forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Let me correct a couple of things. First of all, the Transportation Coalition does have, the Northwest Expressway is one of the major projects that they're looking at and Wichita is part of the Transportation Coalition. Now granted, we've been trying to get Wichita to help contribute to the, to the cost of acquiring the land for the Northwest Expressway. And I have not seen any political will to do that. They did way back when, but they haven't done it for a number of years. And that's unfortunate because the direction that the city of Wichita can grow is only west. They don't have another direction. They're hemmed in. So it's very, very short sighted on the political will of the city of Wichita on not supporting Northwest Expressway. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the Transportation Coalition does have that as one of the priorities. In addition, WAMPO has that as one of the priorities as we move forward. But that's not to say that both of those organizations don't have Arc 95 as one of the priorities as, as we're looking forward. It's in the tip for WAMPO. It's one of the items that the Transportation Coalition is looking at. So I want to make sure that everyone understands that these are both projects that are supported by a number of organizations. And as I serve on both of those organizations, I have supported both of these projects ever since I've been on both the Transportation Coalition and, and WAMPO. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Don't see any. Okay. All right. Commissioners, any other comments regarding the budget this time? Okay. I think we're plowing through it. I think this is a healthy and for sure, it's a transparent conversation, which I think is a little shift in the past. But I am supportive still of doing it this way, if the commission feels that way. And if, if not, we need to express that. But, okay. So next item, please.
Committee reports.
Committee reports. Mr. Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. Briefly, just want to make a note that the District Four Citizens Advisory Board has now been formed. And our first meeting is Tuesday, the 25th. And I just want to thank a lot of the staff that was involved in helping us to accomplish that, Lisa and Carol in our office, Nicole in comms, Tanya Cole, Justin Wagner, very instrumental in helping us get this thing launched and going. And those individuals that have signed up and volunteered to, to serve. I'm really looking forward to coming alongside these folks and, and serving District Four. So it's an important note. Excited for the District Four cab to get rolling. So thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we're talking about Citizens Advisory Boards, I want to remind everyone that mine is going to meet on the 24th of July out at 7:00 p.m. at Goddard School District Service Center. And our special guest for the evening is Tom Stoltz. I don't know if he's bringing Lindsay along to make sure that he says everything correctly, but it's in order to be able to let the public know what our 2024 budget looks like. So he's going to present that Monday night, the 24th, 7:00 p.m., Goddard School Service Center. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And I want to thank, for me, I want to thank Lindsay. We had our District, I mean, our Citizens Advisory Board meeting this week on Monday, and usually our meetings don't go real long, but this one went extended because we had a budget presentation, and Lindsay received a lot of questions and feedback, and got specific to their feeling about specific areas. And it was, it was helpful for Lindsay to hear, but it was really helpful for me to hear. So I think these budget presentations in front of the cab have been beneficial. And then the other thing, maybe not to belabor it long, but three of us were on the city-to-city trip last week, and I've been on one other about eight years ago to Nashville, and I don't know how many of you have been on one. I've always taken the theory that there's a lot of people in our community go to these, and if it's something of real value, they'll bring it back to the locally electeds, be it the City Council, the Commission, and to execute on. This one kind of piqued my interest, and so I went and joined these two commissioners. And I would say, from my perspective, it was worth way more than I had expected to attend. We saw some really, really good stuff, including what Colorado Springs does for their homeless camp, a little bit different than the San Antonio model, from what I understood. But we, I think there's some probably renewed energy in the, in the community about solving this and the definition of mental health. There's a lot of communities or people that have a mental health issue in their family that's not necessarily homeless. So just the definition that mental health is its own problem and challenge with comm care and everywhere else. Sometimes it ends up being homeless, but it's not. Just because you have a mental health issue in your employment or your family doesn't mean it's homeless. So this one was really focused on homeless, of which many of them have mental health issues. But this, it was really very good. And then we saw some other things, you know, cyber, the world cybersecurity areas were really interesting. So there was a handful of other things. So anyway, thank you both for joining us, and I just wanted to report that it was well worth it. So Commissioner Dennis?
Let me just follow up on that, because this is the third time I've been on a city-to-city trip, and it was the best one I've been on by far. And the, a couple of the different presentations stood out to me. The Springs Rescue Mission for the homeless is one that stood out. The leader of that is a very dynamic leader. And as a result, I asked him during the Q and A if he'd be willing to come to Wichita and talk with us about what their efforts are undergoing. So he said yes, he would absolutely come to Wichita. After that, Brandon Johnson from the City Council said, well, would you come and speak to an en banc? And he said, yes, he would. So what Councilman Johnson's idea was, was to have the Homeless Task Force brief, and then have the director come and brief, and then we'll see what other kinds of areas that he ought to go brief in. But I talked to the chamber then after that and said, well, if we bring him in, there's going to be a cost involved someplace. And so I asked the chamber, should the chamber sponsor this coming in? Should City Wichita sponsor it? Should Sedgwick County? Should it be a partnership? I don't know how that we bring him in without making sure that it's funded, because I don't think that someone that's operating a rescue mission was going to want to take it out of their budget. So that's something that I asked Tom to kind of coordinate with the city and the chamber and see how that we can bring him in and at what point. And I do know that he's been asked to speak at an en banc, so we'd have to schedule that. So there's a couple tasks for staff on that. The other one that really stuck out to me was when we went to the academy almost 20 years ago, they were looking at issues with sexual harassment and things that were happening in the academy that weren't in the finest aspects of the United States Air Force. And so they formed a committee of general officers and leaders to take a look at what they need to do in order to change the culture and have a culture of leadership as they move forward. And that culture of leadership really culminated in a program. And really, the underpinnings of that program are dignity and respect. And I liked that, and it resonated with me. And they've already got a program put together, so trying to duplicate it is very easy, because he said they'd provide all, everything to us. It's open. It's free to anyone that asks for it. And my concern is, if you look at DEI, that's kind of been hijacked, and it's got negative political connotations from some areas. But I don't know that you can say that dignity and respect isn't really the same thing, just different terminology and different ways of looking at it. So I've asked them if they would send us everything that they could, so that I could provide it to the staff and have our folks here that are working DEI to see if this is maybe the way that we can look at the future on how that we look at everyone. And whenever that we work with anyone, doesn't matter the race, religion, gender, anything, if you treat them with dignity and respect, that's really what everybody asks for. So that was one of the ones that resonated with me more than most of the discussions. And overall, they were all great discussions, and I want to thank Chamber for inviting us. We got to fly out on the Pegasus, and that was fantastic. I don't think they didn't know I was never a pilot, that I might have been a Colonel in the Air Force, but I never flew an airplane. So, but they did invite me to sit up in the cockpit, so I got to go through the takeoff. And then we refueled three F-16s, which was kind of exciting. So overall, I can't say enough for the trip. I thank the Chamber for putting that together. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just talking about cab boards doing budget discussions. So it sounds like Commissioner Meister, you had your budget discussion already, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Dennis, yours is coming up Monday?
Yes.
The other two commissioners, are yours still in the future, or have they already happened?
It's in August.
August, okay. I sent out, and yours hasn't happened yet. I sent out a note asking for some details regarding the where and when of these meetings. I still would like to see a second public hearing that's not 9:00 a.m. on Budget Adoption Day, but since I lost on that discussion, I would like to make sure I understand where the opportunities are for the public to get access to the discussions, where and when they happen. And likewise, I am looking forward to reading the detailed minutes or listening to the audio at cab one meeting regarding the Q and A that may have happened at that, at that meeting. So I'll be looking forward to hopefully seeing that. I would just say, our website, of course, we're going to fix that, it sounds like. So our website doesn't seem to have detailed, accurate information regarding cab boards, where and when they meet. It's very hard to find that information. I've tried, and I can't ascertain by looking at the website where and when cab boards meet. So I'd like to ask for that to be looked at by someone, please. And I'll just share that again, in District 5, cab 5 will be meeting at 2937 East Oak Lawn Drive at 4:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. on August the 4th for our budget discussion as well. Thank you.
All right. And I just commented, it, the manager's budget that was presented to us last week, that PowerPoint, I think it was fair to remain, in my case, to remain consistent with what we received publicly from the manager's presentation is really the initial, that was the focus of that presentation. And some of these little details we've been talking about here in these budget deals, I don't think any of them came through. A little bit of discussion about Exploration Place, though, that happened. One of my cab members actually is very familiar with Exploration Place, and so felt a strong opinion in that. So anyway, but I think that's true. I'm glad, Lindsay, that you just kept consistent with the manager's budget as of today before we go into the next items. So Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I won't say anything else that you guys have already talked about for city-to-city, but I would like to mention one other thing. This trip was really heavy on military involvement, and how can we build relationships between what we're doing and the military even stronger. So I would love us to look into, how can we, as an organization, become friends of McConnell? That's something that we discussed, and I would, I would love to see what all goes into that and the costs that would be associated with an organization doing it, instead of just a person doing it individually. We were very fortunate to have Colonel Damon with us the entire trip, and so we're able to build those connections. He's obviously very new here. So even though he lives in Derby, and we're kind of rivals with Hayesville and Derby, he's a really great guy, and I'm really excited that he's here. And I'm glad that he took the time to spend with all of us over that period of time, and just to help build those, build and strengthen those relationships going forward.
Okay. Well, that was an extended part of other, or whatever. Oh, wait. Committee reports, I mean. Okay. Next item, please.
Other.
Oh, other. I love that word. I struggle with that part for some reason. Okay. Commissioners under other. Commissioner Howell?
I just wanted to share, I did attend the Evening Reporting Center graduation. Other commissioners were on their city-to-city, so I was able to attend that. And I think, Commissioner Beatty, you were there as well. If you have not seen the stories that goes with these young people, the stories that accompany their success, it is, you'll understand why this investment's necessary. And I want to just say thank you to the folks over there that do what they do. They are making a difference in these kids, without question. And one of them was able to wear a cap and gown, because he also graduated from high school from our program as well. So we got to witness that. I just want to say again how proud I am of our staff for what they do there, and also the young folks that benefit from a very challenging situation in this world, to being proud of themselves for being successful in something that they've done. I just, I think this is a great use of our funds, and we are making a difference there. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. And Commissioner Dennis?
Sorry to come back, but I want to remind everyone that we're going to declare Sedgwick County a Purple Heart County on Monday, the 7th day of August. It'll be a special meeting, and there will be a reception following. And we have a multitude of people that are being invited. So I appreciate our interns that are working that very much, and I look forward to being a Purple Heart County. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I don't see any other lights. Madam Clerk?
Executive session.
That's right.
Thank you, Chairman. I know we're going to go off the air at 1:00 here, but let me just share, we do need 30 minutes. And so while I'm going to make a motion, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 1:30 p.m. for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land and buildings for the use by county departments. And that, the Board of Central County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 1:30 p.m.
Okay. Second. Motion to second. Any comments, being non-Madam Clerk, caller all?
Commissioner Lopez?
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye.
And we're meeting in the classroom, right outside the doors here. Thank you.
Okay. See you back in 30 minutes. Yeah.
And this is the, no.
Okay, we are back live from executive session. No action taken. Is there anything else needs to come before the board at this time? I don't see any, so we stand adjourned.